I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, February 6, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Here.
Commissioner Kuliannis.
Here.
Okay, this evening's reflection will be given by Reverend Milton Smith, who's our chaplain for our first responders. Reverend Smith, if you could come forward. And after the reflection, if we can remain standing for the Pledge of Legions.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you at this time thanking you for another day. Another day that we were able to feel the coolness of your brisk wind. Another day that we was able to witness the trees blowing and the waters moving. And we pray as we assemble here today that you would bless everyone who have come out to this commissioner meeting. We pray you would bless our mayor, commissioner, city manager, all the staff, the city staff, the fire police chiefs, and everyone who worked to make this city a better place to live, work, and play. We actually bless everything that's on the agenda that will be discussed tonight. And we act in your precious and glorious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the past, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We have two special items to start this evening off. Reverend Smith, if you could come forward, please. We have a proclamation to read and will be accepted by Reverend Milton Smith. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the early efforts of Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, starting in 1926, where one week was dedicated to Black History. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is celebrated all over the United States. And whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans, the city of Tarpin Springs is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community. And whereas the first African Americans settled in Tarpin Springs in the mid 1880s, primarily to work in the lumber mills and citrus industry, others arrived in the 1890s from the Bahamas and Key West to work as spongers. Some owned their own boats, while others became divers and crewmen on Greek vessels and spoke fluent Greek. Whereas African Americans remain prominent in our community as businessmen and women, teachers, ministers, and public officials. Now therefore, I, Costas Vaticiotis, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as mayor of the city of Tarpin Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month. Reverend Smith, I'm very honored to present this to you. Would you like to say to me?
Thank you, mayor and city, for this proclamation. At a time when diversity is trying to be erased from our history, we need to remember that this country is built on diversity. And this city is very diverse as well. And let us remember, diversity is what this country is all about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The second item is also special. It's to commemorate the departure of our vice mayor Craig Lunt in December. As most of you know, he let his seat go because of the financial reporting requirements that the state put on all elected officials. And there's obvious obstacles for many people that either you're going to abide contractually about things or else you're going to break the law. So you reach an end point where you can't do one or the other. So the only other option is to leave. Vice Mayor Lunt was a major contributor to the balance of this commission. He was level-headed, mature in his thinking, and also didn't mind speaking out when he felt he had to because nobody was listening to him. So he got our attention in many other ways, too. So I've got a few things that I'd like to present to you, Vice Mayor, former Vice Mayor Lunt, if you'd like to come forward. And Thea, if you'd like to join us up here, please. No? Okay. Actually, Thea is the real reason we're doing this tonight. She's an avid paddle ball, pickleball player, and so we've got to be good to her, too. By the way, if I knew Craig Lunt was going to get all these things, I would have resigned as well. So Craig, we have a plaque, and it states, "In recognition and appreciation of dedicated and devoted service as Vice Mayor 2022 and 2023, City of Tarpin Springs Mayor Costas Vaticiotis, Vice Mayor Mike Eisner, Commissioner Panayotti Kulyas, and Commissioner John Kuliannis." So Craig, thank you very much for your service. Do you have that? And then the next thing. Just a small token of sponge diver's helmet on cuff links that you can wear. Actually, I don't have many cuff shirts, so I take one of those and put it in my buttonhole to remind myself of who I am. So. And then last. If the sponge diver helmet on cuff links doesn't remind you of where you are, certainly this item will. We like to give these to our outgoing elected officials, and Craig certainly deserves this. And again, congratulations, Craig.
Thank you very much.
Would you like this? Your nameplate, Vice Mayor. You need to hang on to this in case the law changes, and you can come back. Before Craig sits down and I let the commissioners speak, you know, any comments it might have, I'm going to ask Craig if he's got any comments you'd like to make.
Yeah, I have just a couple. This is getting a little emotional for me, but first I want to apologize for having to leave early. It wasn't my intent, but that's just the way circumstances were down. Next of all, I wanted to thank you guys for supporting me and for allowing me to serve and support you. It's been both an honor and my privilege to do that and to work with these very five gentlemen and ladies behind us. It's been one of the best parts of my life. So anyway, you never know, laws do change. You might see me again. I'm not gone. I'm still trying to contribute where I can, so thank you very much.
I'm going to go ahead and invite any commissioner who'd like to make any comments concerning Commissioner Kuliannis' part, and we'll go down to the line.
All right. Craig? Craig, obviously, you know what I think about you. We don't, I don't have to say it publicly, but you know, you are, I came to respect you. We actually had this little conversation on Friday. You know, when Craig first got elected, I was concerned about him because, you know, I didn't know him, and he wasn't as well-known in the community as he turned out to be. But he earned everyone's respect. You know, and I came to know you and totally respect you. I would look down to see what you were thinking before I made my decision because I knew that you had such clarity. And I'm like, okay, Craig thinks that's probably right. So anyways, I think the world of you, and we may not be up here together, but our friendship is going to go on, and I appreciate you very much. And the five people who are going to be taking your spot have big shoes to fill. Okay, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Eisner, please.
Thank you, mayor. What can I say? I took your position. And thank you very much, Craig. I really appreciate, I really appreciate. You know how I feel about you. I was so glad that you were the first vice mayor that we had. I appreciated your insight, your smarts, your outside-the-box thinking. You know this. A lot of times, I really didn't have to speak. I said whatever Craig just said I agree with. And I didn't agree with you just because you were saying it, because it was because you made sense. You, I admire people that have a tremendous amount of common sense. You have that. You think outside the box. You do research. That is second to none, which is what a commissioner is supposed to do. You come out with things that we're all sitting up here kind of shocked that you actually read it and found the problem that was there. I appreciate you now passing that baton on to me. That has robbed me of about eight hours a week that I have to follow up. But all kidding aside, you know, I respect you. I'm going to miss you. It's been a really, really important pleasure to have you up here with your insight and your intuitive ways of how you thought about how moving this city forward. And the only thing I'm going to threaten you is now we can actually have a friendship again because we don't have that sunshine. So I hope you accept my hand in friendship, and maybe we can go fishing together and do what we need to do. Because I appreciate you as a friend, not only as a litigator up here and a fellow commissioner. So thank you. And I do want to also thank Thea. I didn't play my best pickleball, but I appreciate you training me and teaching me. So I appreciate you, too. You are what Tarpin is as a resident and as a contributor to moving this city forward, both of you. And just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. So thank you again. Thank you for all that you've done, and I know all the residents really appreciate what you've done and will miss you. And I hope to have you come back, as the mayor said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kulyas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lunt, for your service to the city of Tarpin Springs. The residents appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief. Former Vice Mayor Lunt, it was an honor and a privilege working with you up here. And on behalf of the men and women of the Tarpin Springs Police Department, thank you for your steadfast support of our department constantly from up here and for everything you did as a commissioner for the city of Tarpin Springs. As a resident, thank you. Okay, Ms. Kardashian.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lunt, for your service to the community, for your attention to detail, and I do hope that I get to work with you again someday.
Okay, city manager LaCorus, anything?
Yes, and this is from me and my entire staff because my entire staff feels that way. It was a pleasure and honor working with you. You're a true man of integrity. You're the model of what it takes for a citizen to be on this board and serve the citizens. And we're going to miss you and wish you best of luck. And thank you. Again, it was a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs.
Vice Mayor Lunt, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best as well. And this is not goodbye. And you know, where I'm at, if you ever need anything, please don't hesitate to call me.
Okay, I'd like to invite any members of the public who'd like to say anything of the two proclamations that we had earlier, either the Black History Month or the farewell to Vice Mayor Lunt, former Vice Mayor Lunt. Are there any public comments?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, commissioners and senior staff. Robert Rockline, 755 North Lake Boulevard here in Tarpin. Mr. Lunt, it was a pleasure to get to know you, both as a commissioner and a vice mayor. And there is, as some alluded, a step after that that I was kind of hoping you would consider sometime in the future. You weren't a politician. You were an elected official. You served the community. You served the public. You took in and gave back, and that's the job of a board member regardless of the jurisdiction. You were excellent and super diligent in your research on the variety of issues and such. And then you gave back a very fair and balanced opinion showing, you know, 60-40, 70-30, here's the pros, here's the cons, and here's the consequences of choosing wrong. A lot of times, you would not tell people, because I do a lot of listening, and we didn't have too much personal involvement, but I would hear you speak to people. You didn't tell them what they wanted to hear. You told them what they needed to hear, and that's a benefit, whether they realized it at the time or not. And up there, you always voted with your head, but just as equally, 99% of the time, you voted with your heart. So you have myself and my wife's thanks, big time.
Thank you, Mr. Rockline. Are there any of the commission comments or public comments, please?
Hi, I'm Susan Swenson. I live at 327 Manatee Lane, and I didn't plan this, but all I can say is we started with Black History Day, we became Black History Month. And my really wish is why isn't it just Black History Year? We really shouldn't have a specific day and a month. We should really be celebrating, and like you said, diversity all year.
Thank you, Ms. Swenson. Are there other public comments?
David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Mr. Lunt, thank you, sir, for your service. I attend a lot of public functions and see a lot of board members in their deliberations, and very few are as solution-based thinking as what Mr. Lunt has exhibited, and I respect that. And he is a well-rounded thinking man, and I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes. This is for public comments on the two proclamations.
Chris Robowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, 34689. Mr. Lunt, thank you so much for your service. We needed somebody to put that much attention to detail, and we got it. I really appreciate that. And I'd like for you to be on the Charter Review Commission. I believe they can, one of these commissioners can appoint you to that because we could certainly use your wisdom there. I wish I could have gotten to know you more because of all the things that I know I could learn from you. So in the future, I hope that that can take place. You have my respect, man. You definitely have my respect. You put in a lot of work. You read all of the backup. You crossed the i's, dotted the t's. You knew when a comma was missing. So you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robowski. Are there any other public comments on the two proclamations?
Pier Black is 514 Ashland Avenue. With regards to comments on Black History Month, I was watching a documentary the other day over Dr. Martin Luther King's life and the struggles, showing those pictures from the 60s, people getting shot with water cannons, dogs being released on them. Because people look different, have different beliefs. So, and now we have people up in Tallahassee who want to wipe away any memory of those histories. We have to remember that so it makes us better people. So, speaking of better people, Vice Mayor Craig Lunt. Everything you heard tonight has been true, and I believe most of you acknowledge this fact. But let me ask you this. Isn't those qualities what we want of our leaders? Yeah, those are the qualities, right? So you can go online, go to the city clerk's site and look down, and you can pull up that F6 and see what it asks of you. Very intrusive, more stuff than you even give the IRS. But I want to point something out to you here because all these are coming down from Tallahassee, and we have control of what goes on in Tallahassee by who we put up there. So in the packet, I have to thank Irene and her staff. They did an excellent job. There's a history of Florida ethics law, and one of the sentences, "While seeking to protect the integrity of government, the code also seeks to avoid the creation of unnecessary barriers to public service."
Are we still talking about Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Okay.
And why is it that in the Code of Ethics, don't put up barriers, but yet Tallahassee puts barriers where we lose people like Vice Mayor Lunt? And also potential candidates for future offices. Because now, not only, here's a trick, and Irene can elaborate if you allow her to speak because she explained it to me, but if you decide to run for an office, you have to file this F6, and if you don't win, you still have, that stills on file public. Now, when I ran, the way it used to be, it's an F1, and you didn't have to file it till after you got elected. So now, if you want to run, they're putting more restrictions in front of people. They're keep taking away our right of representation. I've been warning you all for years. They keep taking our home rule, and we lost one of our best commissioner vice mayors. He was the one that was able to broker an agreement between y'all to settle a satisfactory agreement for Mark to walk away in peace, and we could go through a civilized process. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Good evening, board members. Anita Prodas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Mr. Lunt knows how I feel about him. He was one man that we could trust. But I think we need to give thanks to Mrs. Lunt because she supported him for how many meetings that he went home at 1:00 and 1:30 in the morning, and she was there waiting for him, and she supported him 100%. So Mrs. Lunt, I can tell you, he went straight home at 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning because I watched him get in his car. Thank you for supporting him.
Ms. Miles, you have something?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Miles, 433 East Warrior Street. First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Lunt for your service to this community. I appreciate all that you did for this community and the time that you spent doing that. And regarding the proclamation, I'm very grateful for the proclamation, but I want to challenge those that receive the proclamation, those who are in the audience that also accepted a proclamation, that next year, we work with the city to have something in honor of Black History Month, a community event. So not just a proclamation, but let's make something great of Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. There's any other public comments on the two proclamations of people in the audience? Mr. Jomp, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Sharon Landrum, 45 West.
Sharon Landrum, forty-five West Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Tarpon Springs. So I had to say farewell to Vice Mayor Lunt. Mr. Lunt, you have been such pillar on the Commission. You're so diligent, you know the background of every issue. We are going to miss you so very much. You were such a balanced opinion on the Board of Commissioners, and I wanted to thank you, and my husband wanted to thank you for serving Tarpon Springs, and you will be so missed. It is so unfortunate that F-6 has become a law. It's hurt many small communities, so we just wanted to say thank you so much, and we hope to see you serving our community in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landrum. Is there anybody else, Mr. Lunt, Mr. Jump?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, Vice Mayor Lunt, former Vice Mayor Lunt, we thank you for your service, and you were an outstanding Vice Mayor, you're always there, and I know we're going to see you, I know I'm going to see you in the future, and now we can talk freely without worrying about sunshine law violations, so, thank you. Okay, we're going to shift to public comments on anything that's not on the agenda. We have three guests, special guests with us here tonight. We've got the Mayor of Redding, Indian Beach, Ms. Cookie Kennedy, who is also running for Commission seat at the county commission level. She's going to be here to introduce herself. Mr. Scherer is a county commission candidate, he's here as well. I believe you're going to say a couple of words as well. And then also, we've got Ms. Spurlock, Ms. Kate Spurlock, who's a candidate for a Circuit Court Judge, and she's here to introduce herself as well. So I've asked them to come forward early in the comments, so if y'all can step forward if you'd like, one at a time, and...
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kate Spurlock, and I'm an Assistant State Attorney in Pinellas County in the Sixth Judicial Circuit. I work as a specialized prosecutor in the Special Victims Unit, so I prosecute human trafficking, online exploitation of children, any homicides with children victims, and aggravated child abuse, and any sexual exploitation of children, sexual battery of children under the age of twelve. I also used to be in the Traffic Homicide Unit, so I would respond to scenes as well. I have tried over, gosh, seventy jury trials and non-jury trials. A part of my job is doing the civil commitment of sexually violent predators, and that's through the Jimmy Rice Act of civil law, where a person who's likely to reoffend gets released, and I have to petition the court to hold and do annual reviews to be sure that they're no longer a danger to our communities. I'm a mom of a three-and-a-half-year-old, I'm married to my college sweetheart of twelve years, Tyler, and he's an engineer, and I'm running for Circuit Court Judge, so that's going to be Pasco and Pinellas Counties. I've been a public servant my whole career, and I just want to continue to serve all of you guys in the capacity of a Circuit Court Judge. So I appreciate all of your support and meeting all of you tonight. Thank you.
Okay. By the way, I wish to be clear, we allow this opportunity for any candidate that is running for a Commission wide seat to come forward, so it's not by invitation, it's if they'd like to come forward, they're more than welcome to. I think this is a good way to get their information out to the public, which otherwise would probably not occur at this end of the county, so who's next?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Good evening to everybody. My name is Chris Scherer. I'm the Republican candidate for Pinellas County Commission, Seat One. I came in tonight just to introduce myself and tell you a little about me and why I am running for the Pinellas County Commission. The first thing I would like you to know about me is I'm not a politician, I'm a general contractor, I'm a home builder, I'm the father of two children that were born and raised right here in Pinellas County, I'm the son of a naval captain who taught me the value of hard work, determination, and a can-do attitude. Over the last thirty-five years, I have built roads and bridges, homes and apartments, stormwater systems, and wastewater treatment plants, but my formal training, my collegiate training is in finance and accounting. I moved to Pinellas County thirty-five years ago. I came here for the beautiful waters and the beaches and our intercoastal waterways. I came here for the affordable living and the quality of life, and I came here for the business-friendly environment that existed in nineteen eighty-nine. Unfortunately, those qualities that brought me here, they do not exist right now. Pinellas County and some of its cities are destroying Tampa Bay, destroying our intercoastal and destroying our beaches. We are polluting our waters daily with stormwater runoff that's not controlled. We have so many wastewater treatment spills that we've lost track of them, and they've become common, so common that we don't even pay attention to it when it's in the news. We are no longer an affordable city or an affordable county, and I know this because I'm a home builder, that's what I do for a living. I know we're not affordable, and I also know this because my daughter just moved back to town. She bought a little three-bedroom, two-bath house, small lot, just big enough for a little pool, it was built in nineteen seventy-nine, we helped her fix it up, her tax bill's going to be eighty-five hundred dollars this year. That is not affordable. Our first responders can't afford that, our teachers can't afford that, the people who work in our hospitality industries, they can't afford that, and very soon, we're not going to be able to have people helping us here, and this is just not right, so we can do better. And finally, we no longer have a business-friendly environment. I know this because I just built thirty-two homes in Pinellas County, the roads, the water, the sewer, everything, the houses. I did it in twelve months, and everybody's talked about we need housing. It took me two years to get the permits to build thirty-two homes, so it took me three years to build the project out, but two years on permitting, and that is regulation on steroids, and that's something that we need to correct. Now, a lot of people will tell you, we can't solve these problems, they're too big to solve. You know, we can't make it in Pinellas affordable, we cannot cut regulations, we cannot cut property taxes, but my father told me, if I worked hard, and I was determined, I had a can-do attitude, we could solve these problems, and that's the attitude that I want to take to the Pinellas County Commission, and that's why I'm standing here tonight, and I appreciate you giving me time to introduce myself.
Okay, Mr. Scherer, thank you. Sheriff Kennedy, would you like to say a few words?
Mayor Kusta, thank you for having me tonight, and congratulations, I have to say, on leaving. We lost two people in Indian Rock Beach, and it was very emotional because of Form Six. Again, my name is Cookie Kennedy, I'm the Mayor of Indian Rock Beach. I've served as the Mayor, the first female Mayor, for six years. Before that, I was a Commissioner for eight years. I went back to college, and I will be graduating with my degree in Public Policy and Administration in May with honors, so I'm very excited about that. And in my last semester, I had our county administrator as my professor, so I had an upfront and personal contact with the twenty-eight departments that we have in the county, and how our relationships as elected officials in the municipal area, and when we want to have a relationship with the county, how that works, and how we can be partners. And I really feel that because of my relationships, I had my first election when I was thirteen years old at Largo Junior High School. I was the first female student council president. My father taught school at Largo Junior High, and I grew up in a family where we talked politics at the table every night. I guess I thought that everybody did that. We had a picture of John Kennedy, my mother did, I'm half-Italian Catholic, and so we had a picture of John Kennedy in our dining room, and I remember when I came back from school, after high school, I was in the Band of Gold from Largo, and we won three gold medals for the United States, and Bill Young, our previous Congressman, I know many of you know him, he had a congressional record, and all of our names were on it for bringing three gold medals back to the United States. But when I came back from school, I went into Connecticut, I had a friend that I went to high school with, and she came in my house, and she said, "I always wanted to ask you, why did your mom have a dead President on it?" And I said, "Your mom didn't have a picture of John Kennedy in your dining room?" But, so I guess it's how you grow up, and I've had a lot of respect, I learned a lot of things when I became a Commissioner. I've had great mentors who have helped me and created enormous relationships so that when I'm a county commissioner, that I can bring the peace that we share together as elected officials to the county level, because I do think that that's a piece that's missing. And I want to share with you that I served on, that's how I met your mayor, I was on the Ford Pinellas, which I believe is one of the most important agencies in the county. I represented all eleven of the beach communities for eleven years on top of it, and I left in two thousand twenty-two. I was termed out as the Chair, and your mayor came on, and so that's how I originally got to meet your mayor. And I love Tarpon Springs, and when I was, I've been a small business person for forty years of my life, and my last client who came in today, she brought me some cookies, and she said, "We just came back from Tarpon Springs," and they were at Mykonos. I think, is that how you say Mykonos? Yes. And I told her, "Well, that's a good omen, because I'm going there tonight to see the Commission and introduce myself to those that don't know me." But I think the most important thing is I have the heart of our communities, and I'm always been available and authentic, and I try to keep a positive attitude, because as I'm sitting here and I hear residents come up, you know, and talking, I mean, that's what I deal with on a daily basis, and I think that we have to have open government and people who really care and know about what's happening in our community. So I appreciate the time of coming in here tonight and seeing all of you, and I hope that you'll go to my website or call me anytime. Again, I am the Mayor of Indian Rock Beach, Cookie Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, thank you.
Geddes, please, continue.
David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live at eight zero two Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. In nineteen sixty...
Point of order?
Point of order.
Point of order?
Yes. Can you please remove the signs? This is for public comment.
No, ma'am. This is...
Can I have a motion from the Commission?
You have a motion?
Public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Second. What was the motion? The motion is to have the signs removed. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Mr. Geddes, we had talked about the signs once before, and it's not so much the signs as much as some of the...
Hate speech.
...depictions that you have on the sign, and we're trying to do a segregation, keep separate religion and state, and I don't want to get into any constitutional issues, we're just trying to do public comments. So if you would put those signs down and continue with your comments, I would appreciate it.
Well, we all have a general idea of what the signs and the pictures say, so I will continue with my speech based on these signs and the depictions of these three political standings based on the...
You got to get them to sit down. He's taking them down. He's taking them down.
The signs are down, Mr. Eisner. In nineteen sixty-one, the Twenty-third Amendment was ratified stating that the district shall constitute the seat of government. Today, it is self-evident that the district that is to constitute itself as the seat of government is the water district as based on the Twenty-third Amendment in nineteen sixty-one, as revealed in Statute three seven three point seven one five. The District of Columbia, Washington, D.C., was used as a hold, as a decoy, as was the original thirteen colonies being used as a diversion, disfocusing our mindset from the underlying topography, the reality of the hydrology, the thirteen watershed regions that comprise the entire continent of North America. The Confederacy, as recognized in Article Six, stating this Constitution under this Constitution as under the Confederacy, in actuality, is three separate constitutions, one constitution based on land, a second constitution based on water, seen as captures of both land and water in Article One, Section Eight, Clause Eleven, as under the Confederacy. Again, the Confederacy being thirteen watershed regions that comprise the entire continent of North America as an original mapping effort of this country. The Declaration of Independence sadly counterfeits itself as preamble to Hamilton's Second Constitution, declaring our current form of government as being a candid world, pretended legislation, arbitrary, spinning us around and standing us on our heads, hoping to double down. The Declaration of Independence declares to institute new governments, new guards, new appropriations, and new offices laying its foundation. It being found in the Fourteenth Amendment, founded as its jurisdiction thereof in actuality is a water jurisdiction. It's all been double-tuck and two-hundred-and-forty-seven years of sacrilege and smoke and mirrors, the actual act of sacrilege being revealed in the reclaimed water variance application based on Federalist Paper Two. The Christian population is intended on being vanquished in the establishing of despotic water jurisdictions as trafficked under the Fourteenth Amendment, enslaving those that remain as based on Federalist Paper Fifty-four. The Fourteenth Amendment water jurisdiction thereof, they make up the water districts as the seat of government, which in turn serves to build the Confederacy of the watershed regions, constituting water as its weapon of choice. The county government, the city and municipal governments are declared as light and transient. Again, they too were used as a hold, a decoy to gain time and measure to aggregate the water supply. For centuries now, us, the people, have fallen victim to our own scotoma, an illusion in perception and tautology that our founding fathers were feeding us in their lies as taking truth for their fallen reality. The so-called founding fathers of this nation sadly were warlocks, and that's the fact of the actual truth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments from anyone here in the auditorium?
Pier Black's five one four Ashland Avenue. Mr. Geddes, you've been warned twice. You've taken the indulgence of this Commission, and we've allowed you to have your free speech, and they allowed you to speak, but don't bring the signs in again, please. They've asked you that. Now, a little short reading, Psalm one forty. Rescue me, O Lord, from evil men. Protect me from men of violence who despise evil plans in their hearts and stir up war every day. They make their tongues as sharp as a serpent's. The poisons of vipers is on their lips, say La. Keep me, O Lord, from the hands of the wicked. Protect me from men of violence who plan to trip my feet. Proud men have hidden a snare for me, they have spread out the cords of their net and have set traps for me along my path, say La. O Lord, I say to you, you are my God. Hear, O Lord, my cry for mercy. Hear, oh Lord, my cry for mercy. Oh sovereign Lord, my strong deliverer, who shields my head in the day of battle, do not grant the wicked their desires. Oh Lord, do not let their plans succeed, or they will become proud, say la. So, a little follow-up more on this live local stuff. You've heard me bringing it up over the past years. You've heard me about Tallahassee keep whittling away our home rule. I sent you all an article about what's happening in Pasco. It's on the Sun Coast News. If y'all want to go look in the Pasco sites, how the commissioners there are sweating bullets because apartment buildings that were already built are now going to be able to apply for affordable grants. Cuts money out of their pockets. They're sweating bullets. That wasn't the plan, but that's how they snuck it in. So all these developers who've built stuff already are now, and through little wrinkle wrangles, going to be able to apply for tax credits even though they don't have necessarily affordable credit units built into their structure. I sent you that article. You can go and look online. It's been something in there going on for a while. They're thinking about a moratorium. So is a car gonna come here and ask for that credit? And it may not even be anything y'all can do. They may just go right up Tallahassee, apply for a sale loan or a ship loan. Why does all this stuff keep happening? It's coming down from Tallahassee because people don't pay attention. And there's special interests up there that have their bidding. Now, on something a little more hopefully positive. I noticed driving by on mirrors, a lot of the woodpile is disappearing. Latest edition of Florida Trend, page 51. There's a picture of a dome here. Construction of Port Panama City's 17 million biomass dome is complete. The 100-foot, 105-foot tall structure can store 20,000 tons of wood pellets which are moved from the dome to ships bound for European and central markets. The dome greatly expands the port's storage capabilities and expected to create some 280 indirect and direct jobs. I mentioned it before, Vision Anclot, the Stauffer property. The front part, you got your marine, all that land behind there. You put your processing, you co-op with a private enterprise to put a mill there. All that wood that we went, we paid, what, 400,000, over 350,000 to get rid of it instead of getting any income from it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes, ma'am. It's okay. Take your time.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Senate. I'm a resident of 613 Locust Street here in Tarpon. My grievance tonight is primarily for Chief Young. But I ask for help and ideas from everyone else. My son, my son's bus stop is currently at Alt 19 and Court Street in downtown. We are having multiple safety issues with motorists passing the bus. I have discussed with school transportation multiple times. And they continue to pass this grievance off to our local police department. I started calling our local Tarpon PD the week before Thanksgiving break. I called six times without a police officer present at our stop. Finally, I walked in personally to our police department and was met with a lovely police officer who did finally show up to our stop. We are continuing to have issues. I'm continuing to talk with the public school transportation. And they continue to point pack fingers to our police department that we need extra assistance. Today was the first day that we had multiple police officers at that stop. And we are continuing to have issues. Can I have help knowing that today will not be the last day that I see a police officer at my son's bus stop? And that we will continue to have safety for our young children who are getting off the bus? Because it is county rule from our public school system that they do not have to have a parent present when they arrive 15-plus minutes early to drop our sons and daughters off at the bus stop. And when they are left on the side of the road as young elementary school students, it is very alarming. It's not safe to pass, to cross the road at that intersection. I have tried myself and was almost run over. I ask for your help. I know there's a lot going on in town. I know this is not the only issue. But it is upsetting when I leave the bus stop and I see then police officers pulled over by ACE or behind the vacant, or primarily vacant shopping center. I understand they have paperwork to do. I understand they have an important job to do. But I wish they would have taken those breaks at my son's bus stop or other bus stops in our area to keep our young children safe. Is there anything else that could be done?
I'll get with you in the back and get your information and we'll talk.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we have your name and address, so Chief Young will be getting in touch with you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, point of order?
Go ahead.
Could you take my card? I sit on the school safety transportation board and have a meeting on the 28th. I'd love for you to come down there and speak about this and I will help you with support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments from attendees here in the auditorium? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments?
If anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. That ends the public comments and we've got the candidate presentations. I, I think we need to defer that until after the, should we continue on with those, Ms. Kardashian? We have to move on at 7:30.
That's up to you. It's up to the pleasure of the board. You can start them now and then continue them after. Or if you just want to move on to the consent agenda and then move it to after your public hearing items, you can accomplish that by motion of the board.
Why don't we go ahead and do the presentations? And then we'll delay the 7:30. I know we have to do that, but I, I don't think that there's any major issues. There's just one that doesn't involve the city on that. So let's go ahead and present the, start with the candidate presentations. Now, we, we created a process for the selection and nominations, including the application process for people that would be interested in filling former Vice Mayor Lunt's seat. Seat two, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Seat two, okay. And one of them was to fill out the paperwork, which you did, which is in the form of an application. There's, and we have those. That was sent to us today by the city clerk. The other part of that is, and that closed yesterday at 5:00 PM. And so those nominations or at least the applications are closed. And you would consider yourself nominees at this point for that seat. And we've also offered the ability for any of the applicants to say something about themselves this evening in the form of whatever comments you would like. I know we've got presentations. There's absolutely no requirement to make a presentation. If you would like to just step forward and state your name, introduce yourself and say a couple of words about yourselves. And that would be helpful. If you choose not to, that's, that's okay too. The other part of that is that there was some discussion of commissioners asking questions. We limited that to a couple of the questions that you already asked on your application process. But also if any commissioner does have a question tonight, I would ask that they limit that to whatever the candidate says about themselves for the purpose of clarification rather than getting off on some other tangent that may not be part of what the, what the applicant had, had discussed this evening. So that's all I have. And let me, Vice Mayor Lunt, you were trying to get my attention.
He's over there. This is Vice Mayor Eisner.
Pardon me? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Eisner.
We'll get that-
That's not subliminal, by the way, that I'd like to have him back, but that's okay. Go ahead.
So, and I don't mind asking for a motion for this, but I have a general question that would probably be very, it would suit all the candidates. And I would like to ask that question prior to them getting up so that they can think about how they want to answer that. And if that's okay with the board, I would like to ask that question.
What is the question?
Well, the question is, of course, this is a non-campaign. There's no cost involved. It was just, you know, putting your name out there. So what I wanted to know was just what people have done in the last year, two years, three years to help the city. Because you can, I, I just want to know, you know, everybody puts down on these pieces of paper that they want to help the city and they want to move it forward. But I just want to know what, what has transpired, whether they want to go back two years, three years, four years, five years, whatever it is. Just want to know what that is, if the board's okay with that. I, I think that's a fair question. It doesn't put them in a position where they're going to be asking for a decision down the road. It's just, just to give you, give us an idea. Because we're the ones that have to make this decision. In August, the residents make that decision. But right now, we have to make that decision.
Okay, well, I've, I've got some thoughts on that, but I don't want to make any, I, I don't want to give those thoughts unless there's an actual motion and a second.
Sure.
And then this commission, that would be a fair approach, Ms. Kardashian?
Yes.
That's the proper approach, I think, under our rules? So if you'd like to make a motion?
I would make that motion to ask that question of all the candidates.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? You second it? Okay. Let me say something. I, I, I understand what you're saying and I was, this discussion should have been done when we put these forms together. I mean, that would have been probably a good question. And I know you believe it's a fair question. We're asking individuals this, this evening. But I also think that it's kind of hitting them cold on something like that. And, and I think if we would like, we could leave that option up to them, but I, I wouldn't want to require that of them. Is that what you had in mind, to require that of them?
Well, I did, but to be fair to us, we just received these a little while ago. I didn't even know who the candidates were until the last minute. We had some candidates apply early. We had some candidates apply hours ago. So how are we supposed to know who was applying and who wasn't? That's why I'm asking that question.
But that could be one of many questions that could be asked associated with experience, professional experience and so forth. All I'm saying is I don't want to make that a requirement of the individuals. I mean, that's me personally. We would vote on it. Commissioner Kuliannis, you have?
I, I think it's going to be a moot point because I would suspect that anyone getting up is going to talk about what they've done. So why don't we just let them do what they're going to do? And they inform us of who they are and what they have done. So I mean, I seconded it, but I'm not sure that we need to ask that direct question. Let's wait, let's let them do their, their spiel.
Let, let me go to Commissioner Kuliass. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Kuliannis? Okay, Commissioner Kuliass?
I'm not going to support that just simply to the fact that what, there are applicants here who may have not been involved in any city, you know, items or any city issues or volunteer. That has no effect on their ability to serve this board. Their credentials and their experience can speak for themselves. And when people come up here, they'll be able to talk what they want to talk about. But to base that question and merely, that's going to be a big factor in what, how much you volunteered or been a part of city issues the last year, two or three or four years, isn't going to make, shouldn't make a difference in the voting process. We have five qualified candidates. They're all going to shoot their pitch and they all have written down their credentials in that application process. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Eisner, before we continue, that would go to public comments. Would you care to withdraw your, recommend your motion or do you want to continue forward with it?
I, I do want to continue forward with the motion. And for the mere fact, I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Kuliannis said. Because I made the comment at that workshop and at the meeting where we would know everybody. And I, I think it was Commissioner Kuliannis who said that he may not know everybody. So, you know, we do have five candidates. We do have their resumes, what they've done. I know most of them. But I also, and, and to go with what Commissioner Kuliass said about making a determination, it's just one venue in the spectrum of what we have to select from. It's not a, oh, you didn't do anything in the last year. We're not selecting you. That's not the, that's not the real reason. But it does give you more information. And that's, I'm going to stick with that, whether the vote goes positive or negative. I still want to say that, yes.
All right, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this? There's a motion on the table that we request the candidates to tell us what they've done for the city in the last couple of years. And there was a motion and a second, and you heard the commission's comments. So I'm going to ask the public whether they have any thoughts on this. We have to do this as part of our procedure.
Anita Proto, 91 Bay Shore Drive. Everybody does something in the last one, two or three or four years. Organizations that they belong to in the community. I think it's unfair to do that, and I hope y'all vote it down. I think it's wrong to do it at the last minute like this. And when they present themselves and tell why they think they are the candidate for that seat, you're going to find out what they've done. And when you decided to do this, that wasn't part of it. So it's wrong to put this on an individual tonight. And if the commissioner doesn't know these people, which I'm sure he does, and he doesn't know what they've been doing, then what has he been doing in the community as he goes around finding out about what's going on?
Okay. Are there any other public comments on this item or any, anyone in attendance? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to make public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. I do have a raised hand. I'll allow the first person in.
Good evening. Sharon Landrum, 45 West Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. I do believe that these people need to express what they have done in our community. I mean, if they don't live here, I, I don't understand how they could even aspire to be on our Board of Commissioners. So thank you. Good evening.
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further commission comments on this, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
No.
Commissioner Kuliass?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
No. So let's go back to the original approach. If, if you'd like to come forward and make your comments, there's no requirement, say something about yourself. There's no requirement for a presentation. And if you'd like to say something about your experience with the city, that's fine too. So we've got five candidates that have finished their application process. And I'm not going to name those, name who they are. I'd like, it would be your choice to come forward if you'd like to say something about yourself. So this is your opportunity to do so.
Good evening. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Chief and Attorney. My name is Susan Michio-Kicktin. I'm here this evening to ask for your consideration of appointing me to the vacant seat number two. As most of you know, or all of you should know, that I have served this community for nine years in the past as your city commissioner. And during those years, I had many accomplishments which I am proud of. Hundreds of votes and dozens of issues. Going live with our water treatment plant. Building a new fire station, expanding reclaimed water and sewer. Revitalizing the downtown, city hall reorganizations, which made our city run more efficiently. Revitalizing the downtown, City Hall reorganizations, which made our city run more efficiently. Improving our parks and boat ramps. Operating on a balanced budget without using reserves. And continued to move forward with green initiatives, and protect our environment while growing our tax base. Again, these are just some of the accomplishments as I served your community before, for nine years. While I was Commissioner, I served under three different mayors, served with many other commissioners as well. I was Vice Mayor, I sat on the Pinellas County School Transportation Safety Committee, and the Police and Fire Pension Boards. I am a longtime resident of over forty-five years of the city of Tarpon Springs. I'm a Tarpon High graduate, my family is here, and my roots are here. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I can say I have a great working relationship with staff, our Merchants Association, and our chamber. I also have relationships down county with some of our county commissioners. I do attend some of the meetings here at City Hall, and if I'm not here, I am watching from home. If not from home, I'm on my phone watching. I do like to keep up what's happening here in City Hall and within our community. I am very active in the community, I'm sure most of you know, I do a lot of volunteering within town. I hold a lot of fundraisers, along with our local Elks Lodge. I hold positions with the Elks, I hold a state, a district, and a local position at our local lodge, which all are expiring in March, so I can get my full attention here to the city. Like I said, I do numerous, numerous fundraisers through the years. I volunteer, I help raise money for those less fortunate in our community. I've helped raise money for our cops and kids, as well as our cap center. So I do know the wants and the needs of our community. I do work from home, so I am available to attend meetings if they're during the day, special events, ribbon cuttings, and my phone is on twenty-four seven. And I'm available to talk to residents at any time. So I'm asking you tonight, that you would please consider me to fill seat number two. I would like the opportunity to serve this fine city again, and serve with all of you. With my years of service and knowledge and your visions, I feel we can do great things for the city of Tarpon Springs, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kikta. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Commission, residents of our wonderful community, and fellow citizens. My name is Suzanne Soto, and I thank you for this opportunity to stand before you and express my unwavering commitment and dedication to serve as Tarpon Springs City Commissioner for this seat number two. I believe that my experience, vision, and passion uniquely qualify me as the ideal candidate to fill this seat at this time. I have lived in Tarpon Springs for ten years, and I come with a deep love for our community. I have a bachelor's degree in business, and a master's degree in education from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. And I am a graduate of Tarpon Springs Citizens Academy. Such a valuable offering, and so well done, thank you, Irene Jacobs. The jobs I've held in my professional career have been varied, and enriched me with a wide range of experiences. I have served on boards and committees, I've worked for a government entity, and I'm equipped to comprehend the responsibilities of this position, and the intricacies of local laws, permitting, budgeting, zoning, and especially balancing community needs with finite resources, and weighing the public interest with individual property rights. I love to read, study, and synthesize. I am the poster child for lifelong learning. My experience includes significant leadership roles in organizations that include disaster services, homeless services, historic preservation, education, tourism, and performing arts. My favorite 501(c)(3) was Tapestry Theater Company in Wilmington. That's because I co-founded it in my twenties, and we ran strong for twenty years, living our mission, which was to build bridges of understanding among communities through excellence in theater arts. I also worked for the Greater Wilmington Business Journal, transitioning from nonprofit to profit, no problem. I worked as Events Manager inside the heartbeat of the mainstream business community. The community embraced the Business Journal. We opened the new convention center with a three-day business expo with seminars and keynote speakers, power breakfasts, Coastal Entrepreneur Awards, and I was the event manager, it was huge. The organization is still going gangbusters today. Currently, my husband and I live in Tarpon Springs. Our kids are grown, and we have grandchildren. I'm a real estate agent with Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, and a substitute teacher for Pasco County Public Schools. And I volunteer with several groups in the area, including some political organizations. I have been in politics since high school, I know somebody beat me in junior high, but that's okay. I've always been engaged in my community, it must be my DNA. My father is ninety years old, and he is still serving on the Board of Directors of the Warren County Department of Social Services in Front Row, Virginia. Ninety years old. In closing, the City Commission is vital to the management of our essential public services, our quality of life, and our city's future. I believe that my unique skills, knowledge, and experience will complement is my time up? I'm just about done. Will complement the diversity of our current commission, I will bring fresh, new ideas. Plus, I believe a little more female energy on the board wouldn't be a bad thing. I am dedicated to fostering open communications, transparency, accountability, and integrity in all aspects of city governance. I kindly request your support and consideration as you make this important decision. Together, we can foster a city that continues to thrive, meets the needs of its residents, and remains a vibrant and inclusive community for all citizens. Thank you kindly.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Soto. Is there anyone else, any other candidate, oh, Mr. Roboski?
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. First, I'd like to sincerely thank Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the commission for this opportunity. I mean, there's little I can say that you don't already know. But I do want to commit to doing this job full-time. This will not be a phone-in job for me, or a part-time commitment, I will put my heart and soul into this. I take this very seriously. And so I will take the job very seriously, and I will read all of the backup material, all of the material, and I will contact the city staff prior to the meetings to make sure that I don't lengthen your meetings. I know it can be scary to think, oh God, this guy's going to really drag this out, that's not the case. In only the cases where I think the audience needs, or the residents need to hear what I learned from city staff, only in those instances would I speak about our discussions. Because I want this to be a very efficient board, as you have been, and you've been working on. Some people have mentioned my passion at speeches from this podium. And they told me they considered that as a negative, I believe it's quite the opposite. I believe it proves my passion and dedication and my commitment to our city. Now, people that speak from this podium oftentimes feel the need to speak more exaggerated, perhaps. Certainly, they want to emphasize what they're saying, because they're speaking truth to power. When you're on the dais, you already have that power. So with great power comes great responsibility, and I've understood this for many years. And that's why for the last ten years, on the Board of Adjustment, I understood that my power on the board, especially when I was the Chair of that board, that I didn't need to raise my voice, or express my passion, because I had the power of the board. And when faced with difficult developers and their attorneys, we were able to disagree and not be disagreeable. And even when the attorney that was representing our board was disagreeable, I followed her recommendations peacefully. We had no arguments. So any concern that, for some reason, that there would be total anarchy if I were a commissioner, and you could put that to rest with ten years of proven experience. I think it's also important to discuss a few things that you have brought up in the last few meetings. Continuity, yes, I do plan to run for the seat if you appoint me, to keep continuity, and I do believe that that's important. Also, to keep the same direction. I look at this appointment as a necessary aid to the city because of what happened. Nobody planned for this, it just happened that way. So it is not my plan to make some radical changes if you appoint me. I will take your direction and follow your lead, at least for the five months. And then, having applied to run for the seat, I can discuss and reassess the big picture with the voters. And they can tell me what direction they think that I need to go in. So at the election, then, I will tell people what my new direction might be, if there is one. But I believe I'm here, applying for this job to fill the shoes of a fantastic Commissioner, Craig Lund. And I will do the best I can to fill those shoes. I take this very seriously. I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, Chief, good to see you. My name is Frank DiDonato, I live at 811 Calistaca Loop. I have a why, is why I'm here, and I will tell you what that why is. And as hokey as it may sound, it's because I love this town. I've given to it since I've been here, which was in mid-November of nineteen seventy-six, telling you my age. I have been active in pretty much every organization and everything the city has had over years, and I'm very proud of everything I've been able to do. But I've never done it by myself. I've always done it with help. And I'm offering you my help, I don't need the job. I would like to help, but it's because I love it, and because I think maybe I can help a little bit. I certainly would like to. I have experience as Commissioner, I have experience as a former mayor. I've been on budget advisory committees for years. I've been on three or four different charter review committees. I've served as Chairman of the Charter Review. I've been active in Boys and Girls Club, Chairman for years, on that board for almost thirty years. I've been President of Rotary. As far as recent, to answer Commissioner Eisner's question, I stay attached. Some of you know that I stay attached, some of you do not. I don't try to interfere, I haven't been here trying to tell you what I thought you should do. I've listened to you many, many times in the past, and even recent present, watching meetings, because I am concerned. And I'm here because I love it, I love the town. I think God brought me here. I was originally going to open my practice in old California. But something happened one day, sitting in my mother-in-law's place in Tampa. And I saw something about Tarpon, I said, I gotta go there. I gotta go see, and that was it. I didn't leave. And I'm not leaving now. I again say to you that I have a sincere desire to help. I'm a person who agrees to disagree, but I'm a person who will work for decisions and solutions. And I will always support the greater need of the majority of this community. I feel I can work with each of you, and I don't have a power need to be here, I have a want need to be here. I have other organizations I've been into, I've been President of the Florida Carapackers Association, I've lobbied in Tallahassee, I've lobbied in Washington DC. And I think I can contribute to this organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Glenn Loving, 1410 Sunset Road, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I don't have their experience. No way in the political field do I have their experience. Thank you. Thank you, thank you as well, because everything they've done has been needed. What I do have is what they don't, I've only been here twenty-two months. I'm originally from Virginia. I was a general contractor. I have also retired from Altria, which, you know, is Philip Morris USA, nineteen years there. I have been in the military, and I've seen a lot of things. But one of the things that I think that nobody really addresses, and nobody really likes to talk about, is the dirty stuff. The homeless. The foster kids. The kids that need that. And I say that because that was me. Seven years in the foster care system, aged out. Have a master's in international business, I have two bachelors, one in accounting, one in business. Have been accepted University of Advanced Technology for Robotics and AI. We have forgotten about other things. While it's good to be a member of the political system, it's better to serve. I'm a firm believer and server. I have served on Habitat for Humanity Board for the Local, Christmas in April, which is a building board in Virginia. I have also been on the founding member of a grant-making committee for Altria, where we were responsible for issuing two-point-three to two-point-five million dollars with the grants to homeless and other agencies, whatever their group did send a vote on, which would be ranging from youth, senior services, emergency service, anything along that line. So we would have an average of eight, nine-hundred grants every year for eighteen members to go over. If there's not infighting on that, I'm telling you, there's infighting, it's political as it can get. Now, I've never met any of y'all, because I've only been here twenty-two months. Okay, doesn't mean that I don't want to get to know y'all, it just means I'm a person who likes to listen before I speak. I need to know the lay of the land before I can actually answer any questions. I've been to the parades, I've listened to the people. And that is more important, because every situation, every solution, everything is three sides, your side, my side, and the truth lies in the middle. The thing is, we have to find the middle. And the middle's not pleasant, it's painful. Sometimes it's nice, but more often than not, it's painful because somebody doesn't want to hear it. That's what we need, we need somebody to speak to the middle. Not so much to speak to the political view, you know, of what is at the moment, but the middle for what stands forever. Good, bad, indifferent, that's the way we have to stand, that's the voice we have to stand with. You're not going to be united. You're going to fight like cats and dogs, you're going to disagree within each other, but we have to have the person that says, wait a minute, let's think about this. What is the right way, what is the best way for our people? As far as what I have done for the community, I've just listened to them. Believe it or not, my wife hates it, I've been married thirty-three years, the same woman, God knows why she stays with me. But I will literally stop if I'm up here at the Shepherd's Place and just talk, just talk to the people. Why? What is the difference between what I was and what you are now? Why? What do you want? Isn't that key? Isn't that key when we address every single body here, it's not what we can do for you, it's what do you want? not what we can do for you, it's what do you want? Because everybody wants something different. Like, I don't have their political experience. I'm just telling you what I know. I have been in combat, and the worst combat I've ever seen is being on a board. You know, because you catch fire from all directions. Friendly fire was normal. Okay? Like, I don't know any of you. I met Ms. Jacobs over there, and I really haven't really wanted to get to know you. But, you know, we can all talk about these great things we've done. I've done bad things, too. Okay? I'm not perfect. I don't know anybody that is. But I know this, I'm not here taking my time and your time for a five-month appointment. I'm 54 years old, and I plan on staying in this community. I brought my daughter down, my son down, my other daughter's coming next year. That is my investment in this community, is my family. We are Greek, we are Italian, we are English, and we are part of this community to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Kardashian, just for clarification, on presentations, do we have public comment?
My understanding was that you were going to have the appointment at your next meeting, and the public comment should occur prior to the appointment. Yes.
So let me finish up this process by asking any of the commissioners whether you have any questions from any of the candidates, on anything for clarification on anything that they've said. Okay, so let me just finish this up for the record. The five candidates for the appointment for C2 is former mayor Frank DiDonato, Mr. Chris Robowski, and I'm stating these in alphabetical order, Mr. Glenn David Loving, is Susan Michio Kitka, and Ms. Suzanne C. Soto. So, thank you all for filling out the applications and expressing an interest in serving your city. We're going to have a decision as far as who will be nominated for the seat on the meeting of February 20th, is that correct? February 20th. Okay. All right, thank you. It's 7:58. And let's go ahead and go to the, unless, let's go ahead and get the consent or the resident, or do y'all need, does anybody need a break? I don't want to get started on something where you need a break. Okay, let's go ahead and get the ordinances and resolutions out of the way. Item 18, application 2289, 1125 West Curly Place, Roman, and this is the first reading. There's three parts to this. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read the, I guess what we'll do is, since there's three parts, what we'll do is start with reading the title of the ordinance, 2023-25, first, to get us started, and then we'll listen to the presentations. They'll be the same for all of them. And then vote individually on item A, and then, which was the ordinance I just mentioned, item B, which is ordinance 2023-27, and ordinance C, I'm sorry, item C, ordinance 2023-26. So, Ms. Kardashian, unless you've got a different approach, as far as which one to read first, could we start with ordinance 2023-25, the annexation?
The first item is the, it is, there, some are quasi-judicial and some are legislative.
We do the quasi-judicial.
Okay. All right, so, the following matters before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of City Commissioners is quasi-judicial in nature. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the board's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the board. The board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application of the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the application meets the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to grant the applicant's request. If the evidence demonstrates that the application does not meet the code criteria, then the board is required to deny the applicant's request. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the alleged violation, or to the application pending before the city's Board of Commissioners. Any and all board members who have disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make your disclosures at the beginning of the hearing. At this time, I'll go ahead and read the first ordinance, ordinance 2023-25, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 0.26 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1125 West Curly Place, application 22-89, providing for findings and providing an effective date. And each ordinance will have its own public hearing.
Right. Let's ask each commissioner whether you've had any ex parte communications. Ms. Kardashian, would you like to swear in our witnesses?
Anybody who's going to speak on this matter, please stand and raise your hand to receive the oath. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of City Commissioners here this evening? When you come up to speak, please make sure you say your name, address, and indicate that you've been sworn prior to proceeding with your testimony.
Okay. Ms. C. Madge, of course, I'm gonna go ahead and get started on this. Ms. Vincent, I assume our applicant is here, Ms. Roman. Okay, why don't you go ahead and start with your presentation?
Thank you, Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director for the city. This is application 22-89. This is an annexation application. As already discussed, you have three actions. You have the annexation ordinance 2023-25, and then the associated future land use map amendment, ordinance 2023-27, and the rezoning ordinance 2023-26. This is a single-family house on, at 1125 West Curly Place, currently in unincorporated Pinellas County. This application went through their entire build process. Under the Pinellas County jurisdiction, the home has been CO'd. Because the property is receiving utilities from the City of Tarpon Springs, we have to process the request for annexation for your consideration. So the proposed land use map amendment will be from the Pinellas County designation of residential low to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of residential low. The rezoning is proposed to change from the R3 Pinellas County Single Family Residential District to the city's R70A Single Family Residential District. This is the location of the property. Again, this is an unincorporated area that does receive service from the City of Tarpon Springs on West Curly Place. And just an aerial photograph of the home. Under your review criteria for annexation, the property is contiguous to the city boundary. It is not within a type A enclave. The city does have the capacity to serve the property with all services. A consideration under some recently changed ordinances regarding annexation, you do have the ability to consider nonconformities as part of your review of the property. I do want to make a correction for the record. The property, as it, on the final survey, is compliant with the proposed R70 district for all yards except for one side yard setback, which is out of compliance by one foot. So it's largely in compliance. This was incorrectly, or not completely stated, in our staffing prior to tonight. Again, just, again, not a type A enclave. That's, let's, information about type A enclaves in the backup is really not relevant to this application. The future land use map consideration, again, consideration of the property is in the coastal hazard area. This is consistent going from one, the Pinellas County designation to the city. There's really no change in density with this future land use map amendment. And then the rezoning, so when we're considering rezoning, we try to pick a residential district that comports with the, you know, the size and setbacks and uses that are allowed under the Pinellas County. So under our rezoning criteria, we are recommending the R70A, and we don't see any issues with the rezoning review criteria. Staff recommendation is to approve the annexation ordinance, the future land use map ordinance, and the zoning atlas amendment, as is presented in the staff reporting. We've had no public comment on this application. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this on January 22nd and did recommend approval. There were some dissenting votes on the annexation. Two members did dissent on the future land use map. One member dissented. And then on the rezoning ordinance, again, two members dissented, but the ordinances all did pass by the Planning and Zoning Board. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let me ask, Ms. Roman, do you have any questions for Ms. Vincent? You don't have to ask any, and you'll get a chance to make any comments that you'd like in a few minutes. Questions from the commission, any questions? Vice Mayor Eisner?
It is humorous.
I'll get it.
I like it. Are there many locations like this that we have left in this city, or is this an oddity?
We have quite a few areas that are, you know, kind of surrounded by, you know, City of Tarpon Springs jurisdiction. And they just do kind of come in piecemeal. So this, I wouldn't say this is an oddity. We have a handful of these situations in the city.
So here's my question. My question leads me to ask, is this worth us changing our code to accommodate, or is it better to just deal with these on a one, as one basis, is my question?
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney, because annexation is really kind of governed by Florida statute, so.
Right. So if what you're asking is specifically with respect to the one-foot issue, that where there's one foot where the side yard doesn't meet?
Well, each one of them are different, but they're different in different ways.
Right.
You know, we run into, and I know you know this, we run into the situation always of people build under the jurisdiction of Pinellas County. They build it, and then sometimes they find out that they have to annex according to our rules because they've tied into our water system. And so, you know, we've had Planning and Zoning Boards and our board ask, do you really even want to do this, or is it just that you're being forced to? So I don't know whether it's something that we should change. I know that the request has always been for us, and I'm trying to turn this into a question. I know that there's always been issues of whether we can coincide with Pinellas County and try to, you know, make the same settling teeth.
Well, when you bring it in to the city as it exists today, basically, it's considered a grandfathered nonconformity. And there's not like a code action where you would have with a property that's intentionally built to circumvent the code. That's usually a different, a much different issue when it goes through code enforcement. Properties that you bring into the city that may not be built to what your city standards are, the Planning and Zoning staff examines that and tries to find the zoning regulation that's going to fit that property the best with the least amount of nonconformity. So that's sort of what they've done here. So you're bringing it in with an existing nonconformity that's minimal, that really doesn't affect the infrastructure or general layout of the town. So legally, it's almost considered non-consequential for this type, right? There's other ones that can create some issues, and I do believe that they've been sort of addressed by not annexing the property in, where you know it's going to create more of a substantial code enforcement problem for the city. But with something like this, where it's a minor structural nonconformity, I don't think it does anything to either, that's either detrimental to the code or detrimental to neighboring properties.
So the question would be that we should deal with these as they come in, one at a time, rather than trying to change anything and just putting an umbrella over it. Okay? Because I know also, on the Board of Adjustments, we've had situations where we have a great deal of nonconforming properties that come in, and sometimes they're shrunk to things even worse than what we get when we annex in. So I was just like trying to see, because, you know, we get these all the time, and I just didn't know whether it was easier to just put new numbers on it and, or try to accommodate it with Pinellas County. So that was pretty much, because I did get to watch the Planning and Zoning Board case, and I'm not looking to give any information from it. I know that, too. But that was my question, so.
Okay. Commissioner Kulias, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Kulianis. Ms. Vincent, just one quick one. Is this future land use amendment a minor one, or where we do it ourselves, or does it have to go through the county?
It does not need to go through, it does not have to go through the county.
So we'll see a second reading on this fairly quick?
We should, yes.
Okay, all right.
And Mayor, I did just have two additional questions for the record. Are your credentials and resume on file with the city?
Yes.
And are you offering this testimony and evidence in the city's file on this matter for evidence for the board's consideration?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Roman, do you have anything that you would like to provide the commission? You don't? Okay, that's fine. Public comments, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Geddes, do you have a comment?
You have to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on this matter before the City of Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners?
I do.
Okay, name and address.
David Ballard Geddes Jr., 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. When I was reading the teleprompter, it said that this property is being currently served by a public facility. I thought, well, wouldn't that be a utility? In my mind, individually, a utility and a facility are two separate entities. Is that definition misproperly labeled? Should that be a utility, a public utility, rather than a public facility in the terminology and definition before us tonight?
All right. Would Ms. Vincent or Ms. Kardashian, would you all like to offer any clarification or a response in any way? Okay. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments on this item?
If anyone has a, if anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in at all. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can, unmute and state your name and address for the record. And this attendee is not responding, and we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. All right. I'm not gonna ask for any rebuttals. There hasn't been any additional testimony offered. I'm gonna ask Ms. Vincent, do you have a closing summation?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point and ask the commissioner, do you have any comments on this? Not questions, but any comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
To clarify, you're moving approval, correct?
We're all set, Ms. Kardashian. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Okay. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read, let's do the ordinance 2023-26, which is the actual rezoning. That's quasi-judicial as well. Let's do that next. Ordinance 2023-26.
Okay. Ordinance 2023-26, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for 0.26 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1125 West Curly Place, from Pinellas County zoning designation R3, Single Family Residential, to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designation R- to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designation R70A, single-family residential. Application number 22-89, providing for findings and providing an effective date. This item is also quasi judicial. So in line with your quasi judicial rules, anybody who speaks on this item has to be sworn in prior to giving their testimony. And anybody who has any ex parte disclosures or conflicts of interest, please make those at the beginning of this hearing. Thank you.
Ms. Vincent, do you have anything you'd add to this rezoning?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Roman, do you have anything?
For this, I would ask that the Board of Commissioners, I know you haven't done this before, but to go ahead and make a motion to accept the evidence that was presented for your consideration from the last one in this one, for the record, please.
Okay. How do you want to do that? Just go ahead and ask Ms. Vincent to do that? We're going to, we're requesting that you enter your evidence and.
I would enter my previous testimony and staff report into evidence for this particular ordinance.
Okay. Is there anything else? We're okay? Okay, let's, are there any public comments on any of these, on this particular item? Okay, may I have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion to approve and accept the evidence that was presented in ordinance 2023-25 with the current ordinance 2023-26.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Are there any commission comments at all? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Last one is part B of that one. Ordinance 2023-27, future land use map amendment. Ms. Kardashian, if you could read that ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2023-27, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 0.26 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1125 West Curlew Place from Pinellas County land use designation RL Residential Low to City of Tarpon Springs land use designation RL Residential Low. Application number 22-89, providing for findings and providing an effective date. I would note that these were all, or will all be held for second reading on February 20th, 2024, and were published in the Tampa Bay Times by title on November 29th, 2023, and December 6th, 2023.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, for the record, do you have anything you'd add?
Nothing new, and I would enter my previous testimony, staff report and presentation into the record.
Staff report accepted into evidence, although this is not quasi judicial.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Roman, you don't have anything, okay. Public comments, are there any public comments on this? It's the future land use amendment. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. If I can have a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Okay, that's ordinance 2023-27, future land use map amendment. If there's no further commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Roman. And Ms. Vincent, thank you for that. Item 19 is ordinance 2023-29, application 2020, I'm sorry, 23-137 rezoning. Ms. Kardashian, this is quasi judicial. Ms. Kardashian, if I could ask you to read the ordinance by title, give us the procedures for quasi judicial and swearing any commissioners that, I'm sorry, any, anybody here in attendance that wishes to offer testimony.
Ordinance 2023-29, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas for 0.88 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1201 Gulf Road on the southwest corner of Gulf Road and Tarpon Drive from Neighborhood Business NB District to Public Semi-Public P/SP District, providing for findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. As the mayor said, this item is quasi judicial in nature and all testimony must be given under oath. All testimony must address matters that are material and relevant to the issues under consideration based on the code of ordinances. And if the application meets the criteria contained in the city's code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to grant the applicant's request. If the evidence demonstrates that the application does not meet the code criteria, then the board is required to deny the applicant's request. Any board member who has those disclosures, the ex parte or conflicts of interest, please make those at the beginning of the hearing. And at this time, anybody who is going to speak on this item, please stand to receive the oath. And I see Ms. Vincent has already been sworn in. Is there anybody else who's going to be speaking?
We're the applicant.
Yes, the city is the applicant on this item. All right, I see none.
Ms. Vincent, is the applicant here?
We're here.
All right, go ahead and make your presentation, please.
Thank you, this is application 23-137. If you recall, the board did previously review a change of the land use designation on this property for the purposes of constructing a new city fire station. This is the companion rezoning. Under our codes now, we have to process these separately. So the location is 1201 Gulf Road. The current zoning is Neighborhood Business. The proposed zoning is Public Semi-Public. And so this will put the, the correct zoning on the property for, for the future, for the construction of the fire station. It's just an aerial photograph of the location of the property. It's very close to the existing fire station, which will be maintained for some other city use in the future. And again, aerial photograph of the, of the site. The survey, there was some discussion previously about whether or not the adjacent restaurant had the encroachments onto the property. According to our survey, we're not, we don't see any, any actual encroachments on the city property. But as we work through the site plans, we'll keep, you know, work with them on making sure that we don't impact the operations for their circulation on site. Again, the current zoning is Neighborhood Business. The proposed zoning is Public Semi-Public. Public Semi-Public is a, it, we're trying to, trying to put that on all of our city facilities over time. There are no issues with the rezoning criteria. And the staff recommendation is to approve ordinance 2023-29, rezoning the property from Neighborhood Business to Public Semi-Public. Planning and zoning board did review this on January 22nd, recommended approval by a unanimous vote. And with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does the commission have any, any commissioners having questions?
I just have one statement at the last meeting.
Question. Oh, go ahead, you want clarification on the procedure?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Because Commissioner Kulias asked to make sure that we did not, that we had some parking set aside just because it's vertical parking there. Just wanted to make sure that it was set again for this particular meeting as well.
Thank you.
Okay, are any comments from, or questions from the commission? Ms. Vincent, would you like you enter your, enter your staff report into evidence, please?
Staff report and presentation, yes, thank you.
All right. Let me go to the public. Are there any public comments on this item? This is the, basically some legislative action to make it acceptable to put our new fire station at that location. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-29.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further comments. Ms. Kardashian, you don't need to read anything more, right? On the title?
No, but I did also want to announce that the second reading for this will be after the county does their countywide map amendment is when this will come back for second reading and that it was advertised on November 29th, 2023.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner? Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item 20, Resolution 2024-04, acceptance of donation of books. Ms. Kardashian, could you read the resolution by title?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2024-04, a resolution of the Board of City Commissioners for the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing acceptance of a donation from Frank Francis and Mihan family of 10 books called Strangers at Ithaca for public use and for a public purpose, providing for incorporation of findings and recitals, providing for repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent herewith, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is first and final reading.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, I'm going to go ahead and describe what the resolution's for so the residents know. At Epiphany, just prior to that, we were looking for something for the dignitaries to receive. Archbishop Ilpi Delphos, Archbishop Nikitas Lulius, and a couple of the other bishops that were here. The two most senior receives keys to the city. And the one thing that I thought about, which is a, a, a book that I've always referred to on Tarpon Springs, which is completely out of print. It was, it was actually written about 60 years ago, was a book by George Franzese, Strangers in Ithaca. And it's a story about the sponge diving industry, the Greeks, the Greek sponge divers here in Tarpon Springs. And it's an absolutely invaluable book to the history of Tarpon Springs. And if you really, really want to read an authentic history by somebody who actually lived in the Greek community, lived with everybody, knew everybody, consulted with people when the book was written, then, then that book, if you could get a copy, that book would be one to read. And so I presented this to the dignitaries and, and the only location that I knew that they were still available was with the Franzese family. Mr. Ted, Dr. Ted Franzese, and also Ms. Fenita Mihan, Ms. Fenita Franzese Mihan, and she's had passed away. Ms. Georgiana Franzese took the lead and asked her family whether we could have some copies of the book for presenting them to these dignitaries. And through the generosity of the family, they provided us 10, 10 books, is that correct? Gratis, and then we're looking at perhaps purchasing some number more for perpetuity and into the future to have these available to other dignitaries. They're simply not in print. And in any case, according to our, at least Ms. Kardashian's way of doing business, which I very much appreciate, we would normally not have required a resolution, but we, and I think it is good to go ahead and, and act on a resolution, accepting these as gifts to the city. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, you know, we were accepting the donation and that it is for a public purpose and that they are not going to be resold.
Right, yes, they, they were given to dignitaries as gifts from the city and presented and to, presented to them as such by me at the various ceremonies and observances that took place right around Epiphany. Public comments, are there any public comments on this item?
Pierlakis 514 Ashland Avenue. I see the library director here back in the corner. And I have to say thank you to the Franzese family for the donation, but I hear giving them to dignitaries. Are we going to give any to the libraries so citizens have an opportunity to read them also? That would be my question, that we also get a share of that other than the people we're trying to impress.
I believe we have them, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We do have them at the library. Thank you. They are available to the public. I would suggest you go to abooks.com. I would hope that the Franzese family chooses at some point in the future to make them available to the, to the public, but that would be their decision. But in any case, I'm extremely grateful that they were able to provide us that generosity. And, and believe me, when you have archbishops coming here, as a matter of fact, the archbishops in that book are the ones that are, the ones that everybody, the old timers know, Athenogoros and all these guys. And the new, the new archbishops that come here that, that don't have that Tarpon Springs experience don't really have the feel for the city. And so I, I tell them, you know, you were given the key to the city, but this is the key to the Greek community and you should consider as such. So if you want to get the feel for the Greek community and its traditions, because they haven't changed, read this book. So they were very appreciative and I'm hoping they'll be a little more enlightened when they come back next Epiphany. So other public comments. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Commissioner comments, actually, let me have a motion to approve the resolution, then we'll go to Commissioner comments if you have any.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-04. Second.
Okay, Commissioner comments, any comments?
I just want to thank the Franzese and the Mihan family for this donation. We understand how it ties into our history in town and it's a nice gift for those coming into town to receive. So it's just an important part of our history. Thank you.
Okay. Anything to get this in?
Yeah. Likewise, I want to thank the Franzese family. The book is special to me because it has the only known picture of my grandmother who passed away in 1920. It was in that book. So it wasn't until that book was published that we even knew what my grandmother looked like. So that was very special. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Does any commissioner want to take a break or do you want to continue?
Yes.
Can we do the consent agenda maybe first? And I know a lot of people are, can we do the consent agenda first? I know we got a lot of people waiting that thought it was going to be before 7:30. Just the consent and then take the break between.
Consent items, let's do that.
It should go quick. I know we got people, we hit the 7:30 point and didn't get the consent.
Let's go to the consent item. Item one, satisfaction release of liens. Item two, attorney's fees, unisalsman jenson. Special events, Sunset Beach Concert Series, Sunset Beach Movies. Greek C is Greek Independence Day Parade. Item D is Dorset Park, Junior Sponger's Fish Fry. And then I'm going to go ahead and continue on with the three addendum items that are under special events. Actually, two. One is Sponge Docks Craft Festival.
We got more in the events. More than that? Four.
Okay, you're going to have to help me with the fourth one.
Okay.
The Sponge Docks Craft Festival, the item two, which would be the Find Arts Festival, is there another special event?
No, I just, I just meant you stopped in the middle. You're doing the events, okay.
Okay. Those, those are the six special events. Item four is approved change in meeting schedule for May 2024. That's the commission meeting schedule. Item five is authorized execution of sovereignly submerged lands easement for Beckett Bridge, project utility relocation. Item six is authorized execution of Division of Library and Information Services Library Construction Grant. Item seven is ratify increase to file number 2300104, Item seven is Ratify Increase to File Number two-three-zero-zero-one-zero-four, Single-Source Purchase of Legal Promotion Advertising. Item eight is Award File Numbers two-four-zero-zero-five-six, Single-Source Purchase of Caterpillar Parts and Services. Item nine is Award File Number two-four-zero-zero-six-seven, Water Meters and Associated Parts. And the third item on the consent item addendum is Approved St. Petersburg Scholarship Funds. Is there anything else? That's it? Okay. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of those? Okay. Are there any public comments on any of those items? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on these items, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items one through nine, and also the Consent Agenda Addendum, Item one, two, and three, which is the Spongedocks Craft Festival, Fine Arts Festival, and Approved St. Petersburg College Scholarship Funds?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Koulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess and reconvene at eight forty-six. So you have a shortlisted firms, and they're pretty close. You know, you have eighty-eight, eighty-five, eighty-one, eighty. Not a really drastic thing. Is there any price per hour that they have in here that we didn't get to see?
So this is a CCNA process governed by state statute. We're not allowed to ask pricing through this process, so it's based on qualifications alone.
So they can charge whatever they like?
No, we negotiate those rates for, on a per-project basis.
But just between two people?
Just between two.
Just between two corporations?
Between the two that we're recommending award, yes. But we don't put them against each other. We can't make them bid against each other, if that's what you mean.
What holds us back from approving all four and getting opinions from all four?
Not a thing. You could award all four contracts, it's just spreading the word around probably to four is maybe less efficient for us to manage.
I just find it a little difficult to, to just have two. I really do. I mean, I don't know what's involved, maybe that's the reason why I'm asking this question. But this is, it's very hard to differentiate between one or the other. And without knowing pricing, you could be picking, I don't know, the most expensive two. I just, I have to keep an eye on the city pocketbook.
I understand.
So I just don't understand why we have only two.
Well, I will say that in the past, we've usually only had one, Stormwater Engineering Continuing Services Contract. With our other EOR-type contracts, we usually select two. If we were to offer or request or advertise that we were going to select more than one or two contractors, we may dilute the pool. In other words, we're not a big enough of a municipality to have a lot of work for four engineering contracts for stormwater and for EOR. So, you know, it makes more sense for us to keep it on a smaller number.
So explain to me what their particular job, per se, means to us. We give them a sea breeze project to do, or a Gross Avenue project to do? Is that what they do?
Yes, typically. Not the sea breeze project, that was more of a wastewater utilities-type project, but the stormwater projects that include road reconstruction, those are the type of things that you'll see with, under these contracts.
Okay. And we've used these contractors before, and they've been all acceptable?
We've worked with WSP before, and I've worked with Panoni through the county before, and also through Panoni as a sub to one of our other contractors. So the answer is yes, I've worked with both of these firms.
They have no issues, I'm sorry, I'm firing these things at you. They have no issues with workload?
So part of the evaluation is their availability and workload, and we are able to score that based on what they present to us in the RFPs, and neither of them have issues with availability.
Okay. I think you know why I'm asking these questions, so that's pretty much what I wanted to cover. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Koulias, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Koulianis? Mr. Robertson, just for clarification, any existing stormwater projects are going to be completed by the previous people that had been selected, so this isn't going to affect any ongoing project. This is for future projects?
That is the correct statement, Mayor, yes.
Okay, all right, that's it. I don't have any further questions. We have a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Item eleven, Authorized Execution Amendment, Amended Grant Agreement with FDP for Spongedocks Flooding Abatement Project. City Manager La Couris? Yes, Bob, will you stay up here for this one also?
Yep, so Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're asking the board to approve extending the deadline on the state grant for the Spongedocks Flooding Abatement Project. This is kind of a housekeeping item through which we sought to have the state deadline match up with the ARPA deadline, since some of the ARPA funds had been committed to this project. Now, I know we've discussed at the work session last month, the city manager and I are aware that the board would like to revisit that plan and the future of this project at another time, but for now, this amendment simply gives us the extra time to sort all that out and to proceed with the project, should the board choose to do so.
Right. And this will be through twenty-twenty-seven?
Correct.
Okay. Not through, but.
Well, into April twenty-twenty-seven.
Add a date in twenty-twenty-seven, okay.
Yes, sir.
Public comments, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Commissioner comments, do you have any?
Yeah. I just hope that this has, thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just hope that we have enough time. This, we're removing this from the ARPA funds, so that we're going to use the ARPA funds elsewhere, and this is just, we're just going to hold on to the grant? Is that where we're at with this?
So I'm not sure the fate of the ARPA funding on this part just yet, but for now, the second part of your question, the answer is correct. We're just holding that 1.7 million till we figure out what we want to do with the rest of the project.
And before we get involved in this, we're going to know all the nitty-gritty of what's going into causing delays and causing business loss and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, of what goes on in the Spongedocks before we get involved in this?
We'll have a full evaluation of all of that before we proceed with the project.
Is the decision's going to be made from the two prior engineering firms that deal, or they're going to only deal in stormwater and, and who's going to be?
Or they're going to only deal in stormwater and, and, and who, who's going to be managing this particular project as far as in the engineering department?
Okay, so from the staff perspective, of course, it's going to be project administration. But from a, from the engineering perspective, the engineer that is currently working on it is our current existing stormwater engineer and I'm having them prepare what I'm, what's called a design-build package. So when we go forward, their involvement will be fairly limited as we go into construction. But they, that's Purge and Nible, that's the engineering firm that's working on it now, they'll still be involved.
So do they handle the engineering part of just the feasibility of the project working? Or how it coincides with the SpongeDox and the businesses themselves? Do they handle both ends of that?
They will handle what we ask them to and that's something they can help us with, for sure.
So then I'll ask you to please make sure that we have a full-blown report of how things are going to be done because I would like to not have spears thrown at my head from the audience if we have issues with what's going on because I could just see that being a fiasco, so.
Noted. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And believe me, that was thought about when this thing was in its infancy. The first thing we thought about is how we were going to deal with that and, and a bunch of different ideas are on the plate. So that was my first concern way at the beginning of this thing, so, yes.
Okay, well, it's my concern.
I guarantee because, you know.
Okay, any, Commissioner Kuliadis, I'm sorry.
Hi, Bob. I wanted to ask about this grant from the FDP for the 1.73. And if we don't use those ARPA funds that more like we won't be able to use, do we have any other options to apply for grants to help come up with the, some other sums for this project?
We do. We've applied for two already and, and we're unsuccessful. And we're looking at, and just throw our hat in, name in the hat for an HMGP grant through Hurricane Idalia through the Pinellas County program. So we're trying and there's, there's, they're out there, but we just don't know how successful we're going to be.
Absolutely. Do you think this might be a project we could take to our state representatives or, you know, Congress and see if they could write this in due to the nature of the project, where it's at and how it could possibly help out the whole community?
That's a possibility, sure.
Okay. If there's anything you need from us as commissioners or even one of us to go do that presentation with, with you with some of those state representatives, please let us know. Let's try to do everything we can to.
Yeah.
Get this project. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kuliadis, do you have anything? Okay. Yeah, we, I, I know there's still some questions, but we really need to have a, a, a meeting at some point to determine what our real objective is and all of this.
Real soon.
Okay. And so to address the general aspect of the commission's concerns, we're not there yet. These, these things that you're talking about right now, we still need to work our way through. And just the one thing that, it was at the last meeting or the funding, somebody said something about keeping the water out of the stores or the streets or something like that. And I, I said, well, geez, that sounds like an objective. I said, if we decided that's what the objective is. In other words, it's one thing to keep the water out of the stores, which in my opinion, I think would be easier. It's a more challenging thing to keep the water out of the streets as well. So that's a different animal. But at some point, and probably a more expensive approach to keep it out of the streets as well. So that's the one thing I, I want us to talk about. City manager and I've discussed it and he knows we need to talk about it soon, so, okay. If there's, okay, if there's no further questions on this, let's have a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. The next one is germane to the questions that we had earlier. Item twelve, approved realignment of ARPA funds, city manager, the chorus.
Yes, Ron Herring, our ARPA expert, will be giving this presentation.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, Mayor Commission. I'm Ron Herring, finance director. If you remember back on January twenty-second, we had a work session where we discussed the ARPA projects and the deadline, timeline for completing the, the projects. The ARPA funds have to be spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. One ARPA project, the Craig Park Seawall Phase One, in the amount of one million five hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars was projected to extend close to the deadline of the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six deadline. You know, we talked about it and out of abundance of caution, a recommendation was brought forward to the board to swap the ARPA funding from the Craig Park Seawall Phase One project and transfer it to the Lemon Shaddock project and the Elfer Spur project. The penny fund, funding currently budgeted for the Lemon Shaddock and the Elfer Spur project would now be designated for the Craig Park Seawall Phase One project. And with that, I'll have any questions for you.
Okay. Public comments. Are there any public comments on any of these items? On this particular item, actually. This is, we were given twelve million dollars in ARPA funding. That is the, well, ARPA stands for what?
American Rescue Plan Act.
It has to do with the post-COVID, getting back on our feet. And that was given to us, I think, in 2021?
We had two receipts, I think, one in, yeah, twenty-one and twenty-two, they split it in half. It was twelve point eight million total.
The federal law required that the money be encumbered by twenty, the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four and actually spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. So initially, when we got our hands on that money, it seemed like we were going to burn through it real quick and people were concerned that we were going to spend it too quickly and then have nothing. But it seems like right now, some of the projects we talked about spending it on have slowed down. So that's, that's the, the background on it. And I'm going to ask the commission, I'm sorry, public if they've got any comments on this item. Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Eisner, you had your light on.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, Ron, you are the guy that can manipulate and move things around. I just want to make sure we don't lose any of the money.
I call it juggling.
I don't want to override you and, you know, however you can keep and utilize most of this money and then we, you know, have to switch it around is, is the way I want to go. I just don't want to lose any of this money.
Correct.
So I know, as you said, Mayor, we, they were spending it like drunken salespeople, sailors in the beginning and then, you know, now we're looking to try to utilize it accordingly, but I just want to make sure we don't lose it. That's it.
Commissioner Kuliadis?
Yeah, my main concern's the Craig Park Seawall. I just want to make sure we have a plan that's, we're able to start working on it here at some point in the next few years and really get that first half done. And I, I don't mind the shifting around, but I mean, the Elfer Spurs project, I, I need some clarification again on that project. Are, are we basically extending the trail from where the trestle is, cross alternate nineteen? If you could help me, city manager, or the Elfer Spur project?
Yeah, that's an extension of, of the trail. Remember, we just picked those projects because they had penny for Pinellas money that we could substitute for here. So, so what, what the choice of these two, two were was having available penny money that we could swap for ARPA money. So the penny money could go to the Craig Park. And, and by the way, since we had that meeting and we're concerned between the meeting and here where this was just a precaution, we've already had a holdup with the permits for the Craig Park project. That's at least a three-month delay, which means we're anticipating October. So we're already, again, in the time from when we talked about being for sure. Now this is almost a necessity because we already, we, there needs to be more permitting. We need to do for that, for the, the money that we're getting is because of the grant. They're putting more requirements on us, minimal three-month delay, which means the project will be after the first year and not eligible.
Is this the state or the federal government?
Bob, you want, you want to talk, just explain to them what the whole.
But I mean, just to clarify.
There's a short, you know, and I'm not Nostradamus, it's just I've been around so long. If there's ball and permitting, but, but it did happen between time.
Yeah, to answer your question, it was a federal requirement. The Army Corps came in and required us to do an additional cultural resource assessment survey.
Is it, I'm sorry, say it again?
Cultural resource assessment survey, yeah.
That was, we need to convince them as far as the historic importance and that's.
We did one on the state level that got approved and the feds said they, they wanted more.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just hoping this one of our main goals as a board together is the funds are there and some construction work can start on that spring bayou. I, I think that'd probably be one of the biggest goals for us as a board. And just the Elfer Spur, i- isn't that connected to the point, to the part where the county is, has closed off the trestle? And do they intend on working on it sometime soon to open it back up?
Yes, and yes. The short version.
All right. Thank you. I just don't want us to, to work on that project and they have no, you know, fixing together the trestle or that seawall that's starting to cave in over there.
No, we, we've emphasized that if we're going to spend this money to go through our city to connect and stuff, that, that not, needs to not be an ending point where we did that to trail to nothing. So they're working, yes, yes, they're working in conjunction with us to get the whole stretch open.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kuliadis, you're done?
No, no further questions.
Commissioner Kuliadis?
So I think, Bob, you may have answered my question roundabout, but, okay, what is holding up the Craig Park project? What's holding up? I understand that the, and I, I understand the, the moving of the money line items from column to column to get us more time to take the pressure off of the ARPA funds, but what's holding up the Craig Park Seawall?
Yeah, so in this case, it's the additional work that the Army Corps of Engineers is requiring us to do, the cultural resource assessment survey that's taking more time. The design is fast. The, the engineers are just waiting for the permitting so they can finish up the design.
So is it something we can fast-track to get moving on or no?
I mean, it's not something we, we, we're doing the assessment as fast as we can. We already have a lot of the work, it's already been done, so.
Right.
But, yeah, we can't hurry the, the Army Corps.
And any of these delays do not jeopardize any of our grant funding?
Correct.
They do not. They do not. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the delays are related to the grant funds.
Because of the grant funding.
Exactly.
That's, that's what's causing it, yeah. Commissioner Kuliadis, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. We went to public comments, we did the commission. Are there any further comments? I'd like to have a motion to approve the realignment in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kuliadis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliadis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robertson? Mayor Vaticios?
Yes. Okay. Item thirteen, update and direction land development code amendment for neighborhood conservation overlay process. City manager, of course.
Yes, the next two will be Rene Vincent to present. So thirteen?
Right.
Okay. Good evening. I wanted to come before you this evening with these two potential land development code amendments. The first is establishing a process for a neighborhood conservation district, I'll call it, or overlay. This is coming about in conjunction with the work that we're doing on, in Greek Town as also with the Union Academy area. And we're, we're looking for an alternative process to our traditional, I'll use the term rigid historic district regulations. So we're looking, a neighborhood conservation overlay process would be something that, where a plan would be developed for an individual neighborhood. And then they would have to, you know, through that planning process, you would establish, you know, what things you want to regulate and how that process would take place. So this is a, a first look for, for you. We have been working, you know, been working on this behind the scenes for, for quite some time. It's definitely not in, you know, I won't say it's in final, final format, but I did want to get in front of the board and just at least get some direction to move forward with this. And I need to, you know, I need to kind of continue working with the city attorney on making sure that it's consistent, you know, internally and that we're figuring out how we're going to address, like, who the reviewing boards may be and things like that. So with that, I'll stop. Again, it's, it's really creating a new section in our article regarding historic preservation to create a conservation overlay process that we can use in other areas of the city where there may not be full support for a full-blown historic district.
Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Tina Boukavales, one fifteen Athens Street, and I'm with the Greek Town Preservation and Heritage Association. And we want to applaud the work that Rene Vincent and the P&amp;Z staff have done in working so far to creating these new, in reformulating the LDC ordinances to allow the possibility of neighborhood conservation overlay districts. We very much appreciate their hard work and the speed with which they've done this so that we can move forward. This mechanism by which neighborhood conservation overlay districts can be designated is vitally important to allowing us to designate and thus preserve important areas of the city which at this time have no guidelines in place that can help them keep their historic character. It will allow the city to create guidelines specifically formulated to reflect the needs, history and culture of those areas without placing undue restrictions on property owners. That being said, I, I think there are still some definitional issues within the draft that the city probably should examine and address in order to be in accord with state and national historic preservation definitions. But I think there is certainly time to do that through internal discussion and maybe conversation with state and county historic preservation personnel. And I do also want to say that the Greek Town Association members are very much looking forward to the community staff and consultant discussions at the upcoming collaborative design sessions for the Greek Town Historic District, which are going to be offered next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can unmute and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Please, if you would like, it's five-one-four Ashland Avenue. This, uh, these amendments are a good start. So let me go over a couple of factual things in here that I like. On page four, where you're talking about historic property or historic resource, you added real property or other element of historical, cultural, architectural and archaeological value. So that's interesting, you put in real property. And then also on page six, where you talk about resource, you include intangible cultural resources, that social practices, rituals, oral traditions. I think that's good. Then on page six, where item C two, where you include petitions available from a nonprofit or civic organization. I like that fact. And then also on page seven, it refers on number, oh, let's see, that's D six. Also, again, giving a petition availability for a nonprofit civic organization. So I think all of these are good starts. Uh, one thing I would like to point out, I know it's not in the context of what's being brought here at this point, but if you go further down into the backup, you go down to one sixteen, archaeological zone base map requirement. I think this might need to be looked at a little bit further and reviewed. And I heard Mr. Robertson saying he's needed to do a cultural resources assessment for some property. I'm not sure exactly that location, but I think one of the things with regards to archaeological resource map one, I don't know when the last one was updated because A says it needs to be kept up to date, maintained. But I think when we have requests for cultural resource surveys, we need to require they get a brand-new actual field survey. With the problem with the ankle seventy. With the problem with the Anchoat 74 is the surveys they have used are the ones that went back all the way from 1998 from ABR and all they did is look at them, there's not really anything new, stamped it, and you moved on. So one of the things I'd like to see, and I know it's not necessarily with the overlay district, but something also looked at in that regard. And then lastly, and I know I'm running out of time on the Zoom thing, but if you look at your mission statement, it talks about, let me go back, I think it was number four, to promote tourism through the preservation expenses of the physical characteristics that attract visitors and patrons thereby stimulating the economic base of the community ritualized upon tourism. I would say at this point, this might be a place to put in land preservation because that's part of our history, it's part of our culture. So if you're looking to put a place that possibly put land preservation, tie it into our historic and heritage preservation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Jump?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time.
None? Okay, thank you. Let me go to commission comments. Vice Mayor, a lot of the lights on, is that for you? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Eisner. We're gonna keep tabs on you. I'll get it right, I'll get it right. It's funny. Yeah. So here's my question, under, you have a red, a lot of red highlights, and it's, I think, 106.01, historic districts and neighborhood conservation. You have here on the neighborhood conservation, number one, discourage demolition of historic and cultural assets, I agree. But number two says discourage demolition by neglect. What does that mean?
Basically, Philly, it's a, it's a term under historic preservation rules and guidelines. If you own a historic property and you don't maintain it and you're just letting it fall into the ground, that's considered, can be considered demolition by neglect. And so it's, it's, you know, I'm not saying that anybody in this town would do that, but it is not unheard of that, you know, if you wanted, you basically want to demolish your property, but you can't get a certificate of approval, but you're just gonna let it sit there and kind of crumble, so demolition by neglect.
Well, we have a few of those currently in town, and that's why I'm asking that question. You have situation where somebody dies. How do you handle it?
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney.
So sometimes when you have properties that are falling, falling into substantial disrepair, you can actually use the code enforcement process to sort of help address those types of issues, particularly where you're talking about a property where somebody is intentionally letting it go to that status. I mean, I've seen communities where they aggressively go, go after, like, peeling paint. So, I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be that extreme, but particularly when it gets to the point where the property is in such a condition where it constitutes a danger, where it's uninhabitable or danger of collapsed neighboring properties and needs to be reinforced, those are some of the things that can be addressed through a code enforcement process. And then sometimes, particularly if there's some sort of financial hardship, having an aggressive grant program can also help with that by offering folks the resources that they may need if they don't have adequate resources to maintain a significant historical property, making sure that the city has the ability for qualified property owners to step in and take care of that.
My question is, I just didn't understand why it said it, because we do have code enforcement. And whether it be the historic area or not, I mean, wouldn't the code enforcement handle that or shouldn't they handle that? You know, there's, and let me just add this, because we had an issue on Myers Lane way back when. And we just recently solved that we gave them a, I believe, a variance, we allowed them to build on the corner of Myers Lane. But prior to that, that property was in litigation because the contractor built the, he built on two pieces of property and there was a lawsuit. So my question comes back to this. I just don't understand when it says discourage demolition by neglect. It was neglected and it had to sit neglected for the entire time through the litigation. I remember sitting on the board, and I'm sure Chris Sabrowski remembers it as well, we had a person that came before us that wanted it knocked down. The city couldn't bring it down because it wasn't our property. The contractor was being sued by somebody, I mean, it just became so sticky. So I just don't understand, when do we get involved? I mean, you know, and I know I'm gonna come back to you, Ms. Kardashian, it's, this is a type of sticky thing, I just don't know. We have Annie Dab's property sitting on MLK, okay? That's been sitting there in neglect. She's not around anymore. Who handles that? That property, if we just leave it sit there, is going to fall down. When do, what I'm trying to find out is, what is the procedure to go forward? Just putting words on a piece of paper is one thing. How do we go forward and, you know, not have this property fall down? And what happens in the event of a litigation?
So generally, without specifically stating it the way that it's stated in here, the city would only address properties that threaten life, health, safety, welfare, right? Baseline all the time, general code enforcement, life, health, safety, welfare issues, right? This adds another layer to that by evincing a policy of the city that specifically says that you're not going to let your historical resources get to that point. So it's a little extra of a step that you're, that for, as a policy statement that says you're going to take extra effort as a community to preserve your historic resources by addressing neglect before it gets to the point where a structure has to be demolished. Because a lot of times, if you are stepping in, in code enforcement with a property that's in that level of a condition, it usually is to be demolished, right? I know there was just recently one where, you know, a property had burned down and, and, you know, that has to go a certain way. So this is a little bit different and a little bit of a lighter hand touch than that because you're looking to preserve those historic resources before they get to a level where they cannot be restored anymore.
I'm still just thinking that that would be something that falls under code enforcement, whether, you know, for all of Tarpin, and that's why I, when I saw this, I just said, yeah, it kind of looks like it's redundant, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything?
Just want to thank staff for working on this overlay in many different of the neighborhoods that, that make up Tarpin Springs. And I see there are some comments and that were input and suggested with the help of Mrs. Boukavales and the Greek Town Preservation Association. And I just wanna hope we have a productive meeting on Monday. I understand there's gonna be maybe two sessions.
Two sessions, yeah, just for the public record. So on Monday at Rusty Bellies, Rusty Bellies is closed and they're allowing us to use their facility. We will have two collaborative design sessions. You can come to either one, there'll be identical material. The first one is from nine to 11:00 in the morning and the second one is from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening. So we're hoping to get a good turnout across both of those and try to have two different ones so that we can capture different parts of the, of the public business owners and residents and, and so, yeah, we're looking forward to, I think it's gonna be a fun event.
It's great to see staff and local organizations who want to help out, just trying to look over all this together and just looking to see how it all comes together and seeing how that next meeting goes. So thank you all, thank you all so much.
Commissioner Kulianis?
I just, I just have a question on, a follow-up to what the vice mayor was saying on code enforcement. And this may be a Attorney Kardashian question. Now, is all code enforcement have to be by complaint?
Currently, it is, but there are situations where if it, if it does present that, and rise to the level of that life, health, safety, welfare type issue, where it presents a danger to people on the property or people surrounding the property, that is brought to the city's attention either through, through passive observation or through a complaint, that the city does have that ability to step in. You know, particularly if it's structural or something where there has been some sort of damage, like I use the fire example, that's something where you know there's been some event that has occurred that has compromised the integrity of the structure. You know, your building official goes in to condemn a building like that to, to, you know, if, to obviously evaluate it first and, and see, and also, you know, your engineer. But when you're, you know, there's a difference between general property maintenance, which tends to be complaint-driven, and your system right now is geared towards being complaint-driven. The courts and particularly around this area and throughout Florida favor complaint-driven because other systems have been abused. And, and to sort of, as a reaction to that, now most code enforcement schemes and mechanisms tend to be complaint-driven. You know, when I, when I first started practicing in this area, there actually were communities that, and there still are, communities that will go and actively drive through neighborhoods to look for code violations, to keep a certain aesthetic in the community.
So, okay, I, I'm caught in the same mental loop that the vice mayor is, because if we have to wait till it is a safety issue, then most likely it's going to be a, beyond, it's too late, it'll then have to be demolished, right?
Usually.
So if we, if we can't, if we can't act until it's unsafe, how do we, how does the city proactively achieve this, this goal here? Yeah, how do they get there?
Well, that, that would be particularly with spot inspections, a lot of times it happens where, you know, your code inspectors, I don't think you, you really have code inspectors that do sort of random drive-through neighborhoods or anything like that. And if you did want to develop something that was more pointed to particularly look at the, you know, historic aspects to make sure that you're not having that issue, that's something that you can look at. But right now, the system that you have in place is complaint-driven.
Something that I would add just for, you know, one of the ideas of this would also be, you know, where, if we can develop incentives, you know, to keep the property up versus trying to use the hammer, and that's part of that plan process that we, we would be going through, so.
Let me emphasize too, because it's a pet peeve of mine, we haven't thrown away proactive enforcement. I emphasize that to the chief, and I emphasize we don't throw that away. In the, in the past, you know, complaint-driven, we were so busy with complaint-driven, you didn't have much time to do proactive, but there is no, if we've got an area, an area in the town, neighborhoods or something where there's an persistent problem throughout, there's nothing against us going in and doing proactive enforcement. So, so it gets us misnomered when the law came out and you had to have a complaint, you had all that stuff, everybody seemed to forget about it, but there are areas and times where we have, we do sweeps, for instance, you know, when you see the flag sign coming out and stuff going, I tell chief, it's time to make your sweep, because if three of them get out by the next two months, there's gonna be 10, there's gonna be 12 of them out, so, so that is still incorporation, it hasn't been, been left. It's just, you know, now that we're up to speed, we have a code officer and stuff to handle, so there are cases where we can do that and be a proactive mechanism, which, again, I'm one of those ones of pure, pure complaint-driven, that's, you know, I never liked it throughout my law enforcement career now, so.
Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything else? Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Kulianis?
I just want a clear understanding for the sake of the residents, staff, you know, proactive, complaint-driven. Is it, is it understanding from state law that proactive must be done if it's, in the case of a well-being, health, safety, well-being of anybody near the structure? Is that considered a proactive approach?
Oh, that, that's the very baseline approach. That is just the very baseline approach, is that, that health, safety, welfare aspect where it presents a danger to the community or, or something else. Those are gonna be more severe cases, right? One thing I want to clarify about the law is that what the law did when they, they changed the statute was specifically to require that cities cannot accept anonymous complaints. So I want that to be clear. It didn't say that you have to only be complaint-driven, that's not what the statute said. What the statute said is that cities and, and communities can no longer accept anonymous complaints, and if somebody's gonna call and complain on their neighbor, that they have to leave their name and their address. Otherwise, we can't, we can't use that as a basis to investigate a property.
Okay, so code enforcement officer can be in a certain neighborhood and see certain violations and just proactively start?
Yes, that is absolutely allowed.
Okay. We got that on the record.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis? Do you have any? Oh, Vice Mayor Eisner, you had your light on, okay. So would you be able to give me, just because Commissioner Kulianis and I are on this back and forth and we're both, I, I can't speak for him, but I'm not fully understanding yet. Would you be able to give me one, one way of how we could discourage demolition by neglect? How would we go about that?
Offering grants for preservation purposes. We do it now. But we, so, I mean, there's grants available in certain areas of the city for facade renovations and things of that nature. So you can do building improvement grant, you know, that's just one, you asked for one.
And when we get to the items down the road and stuff, and if you want an item on code enforcement, we can get there, we've kind of gone.
I think, yeah, we've kind of off topic here.
A little off the item that we're bringing forward.
Just be happy and ask for 10, but I'll let you go with that one. Just, you know, this whole business of this particular item is, it's not just black and white.
Sure.
You know, I've dealt with this when I was in his shoes, and it was far worse. Remember, community redevelopment block grants to help demolish and clean up? And, and we did have attempts of demolition by neglect or abandon, but there's habitability, there's habitable structures, non-habitable structures, there's abandoned structures. Each one is different. If you've got somebody who's living in a house who's, that's fallen around and they're homesteaded, there's a limit to what you can do with that. I mean, and, and so on the other hand, if it's abandoned and it's not homesteaded, it's a different animal. And on the other hand, if it's, if it's completely habitable and, and they're charging rent, that's another, you know, renting it out. So there's all kinds of nuances to this. I think what we're talking about is specific to our neighborhood overlay district and how would we deal with these? And I think what Ms. Vincent is doing is just putting out there a term that is typically, what would you call it, a safeguard right now, without actually kind of fleshing it out at this point, so.
We, we use the same, the exact same term in the, in the existing historic preservation ordinance.
And so let me get back to the direction that you'd like. I, I read it and I, I very much appreciate what you're doing. I, a little, I, I didn't think we would be going as far as we did. I thought there would have to be a little push to get there, but we're, we're there. I mean, we're moving ahead, and I think that there's some cleaning up that needs to be done.
Certainly.
And I, I do want to go actually through that and at some point, I think, is the city manager would allow for city commissioners to sit down rather than try to hash this out publicly, to kind of go through that. The one thing that still sticks in my mind, which I'm not real settled with, if you remember, I think it was a Bavarian Inn that was a short-term rental or Airbnb or whatever, and we converted it to a hotel, and the state requirements for a hotel was minimum of 25 occupancy. And I said, there's no way they're gonna get 25 occupancy. And the way we handled it was that the state had their definition and the city's got its definition.
Right.
And it might be okay in that particular instance, but when we get into something And it might be okay in that particular instance, but when we get into something like a, a preservation area, we, we need to have some commonality of, of language and terms. And, and that's where, um, I think, uh, Dr. Bucavales touched on that. I, don't get me wrong, Renee, I know you've got a lot of work you still need to do. So I'm not, um, there's, I really like what we see. I'm just offering this that at some point there may be some argument. There has, there was a near attempt to take one, uh, structure out of the, uh, historic preservation, uh, district as a, as a contributing structure.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't do that. And it was not in a very good condition or anything like that. Uh, so that, who, the owners of that worked through there and they, they did what they needed to do along with the historic preservation board. So it's the same sort of thing. We need to, because at some point, if, for example, the sponge exchange was a historic contributing structure, that was taken off because of the changes that were done. And, um, so, so we need to talk to the same language that if we allow something and we still call it historic district or a historic contributing structure, and somewhere along the line, the owner says, well, I changed this, that's what the city said, but you know what, national district, it's not really that anymore.
Right.
And we get into a bind with arguing over whether we're consistent with what their requirements are to maintain the historic character
Right.
Or the designation of that area. So I, I've got some work right now. I, I really like what you're doing. And I, I, again, you know, in, in that meeting on, um, this weekend is gonna be a terrific
Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Monday.
On Monday, um, is gonna be a good one and we'll see how it goes. So thank you very much. Is there anything else? Uh, uh, do, do we need to vote on this or anything like that?
No, I'm just looking for general guidance and to move forward.
You're okay with everything?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next item is, um, approve the Is there someone from the royal family here?
It's 14, we got one more that's Renee is doing, 14 that Renee is doing.
I have one more land development code amendment to talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, Renee.
That's all right.
I've got this thing crossed off already. Um, update direction on land development code amendment for development agreement duration. Yeah, I, I have something to say on that too. Um, uh, go ahead.
Uh, this was actually, um, initiated at the request of the planning and zoning board. They feel very strongly about this, um, and that, and to kinda clean up an internal inconsistency in our development agreement section of the land development code. Essentially, um, what this, uh, the, this, the proposed change would be, would, it would limit the initial duration of a development agreement to five years. And you could get one additional extension of up to five years. Um, and then the board, the planning and zoning board would also specify that if you're gonna do that extension, that additional up to five years, that that would have to be, um, uh, by a super majority vote of, of the board of commissioners. So that really is the extent of the, of the change. Um, I'll be happy to take any questions. And again, you know, we'd like to move forward with this if the, there's a consensus of the board.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? This is, um, changing the duration of a development agreement approval from 10 years to five years with a, um, an extension of another five years with a super majority vote of the commission. Okay. Um, any public comments on that? Uh, Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Renee, for bringing this up. I think this is a super amendment. This change, if you remember, was done in February 2019. I would implore the board to go back and look at the commission meeting of February 12th, 2019, and then also February 26th, 2019. And observe, I think on, I'll reference the 26th one, but around an hour and 25 minutes, the discussion comes in on this amendment, the conditional use amendment that changed the parameters for that. And then also another, uh, amendment that was done with regards to fees, that developers would have to re, the city recoup for any kind of wetland, uh, high gr- uh, ground. So that was done by a previous commission. And you all know these meetings from the emails that went through, through the special counsel. They even referenced those meetings and you're aware of them. And I just would like to point out that one of the applicants or the current appointee was a person on that board responsible for these changes. So I'm not going to point fingers, but you can look and see who was there and who was responsible to changing this to 10 years, who was also responsible for passing a vote that didn't recoup city expenses from a developer, and also approved the conditional use changes that allow the parameters that were from building permits to go to site plan. So do a little research before you go and select your appointees to see who you really want on the board. But as far as these changes, they're long needed. And I would recommend you take staff's recommendation, put these in ordinance form and pass it. And it does look like a good option to have a super majority due to the fact that changing a development agreement should be a majority vote, not just the slim 3-2. It should go by a majority. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Um.
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to commission comments. Commissioner Kuliannis, you had your light on real quick and turned it off. Do you have anything or?
No, I was, I just wanted to add.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Y- yes.
Um, I did wanna just thank you. I'm very much in, uh, agreement to the super majority vote. Um, I think when you make a major change in any policy in the city, um, it shouldn't just be a three to two vote. So I, I'm very pleased to see that that change went into play. That's all.
Do you have anything? You know, Ms. Vincent, I, I, I'm gonna probably be the little bit of the, um, um, uh, you know, I, having gone through this and, and I know, uh, we had that, what was the issue that we reduced the issuance of, was it obtaining permits within six months or something like that? You know, I honestly believe, given this time of day, and I don't know when the 10-year or the five years were put in place to begin with, but I, I'm inclined to discuss, um, reducing it to further, even to two years with a two-year extension. And again, I'm just, it's my gut feeling. I'd like to have a discussion with you and, and maybe, uh, uh, not necessarily Mr. Gilson, but primarily yourself. And to give me some thoughts of why, what the pros and cons of doing that would be, um, I, I, two years is an awful lot of time. And, and, um, five years is, uh, I, I'll, in, in those meetings that, that I think Commissioner Delak, or former Commissioner Delakis was talking about, I remember there was a comment made, I think it was by Commissioner Carr at the time, that he's not too interested in, um, having a, a, a development hanging around for 10 years when something better comes along for that piece of property, but they can't do anything about it because the property's got a development agreement on it. And this was way back. And, um, uh, so that's the sort of thinking I'm half. And, and I'll just wanna share that with you right now. We can talk about further. Um, and I don't have any further thoughts on that than beyond that. And, um, anyway, let me go to Commissioner Kuliannis. Do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I, I just think this is a, I'm willing to support, um, a discussion that, what you talked about. I mean, I, I really didn't care for the six-month permitting process with staff. I thought that was shortened too much. But I, I think, uh, somewhere what you're asking for is reasonable for
For five years.
With what you suggested for us to have a discussion, two, three years, I, I don't, you know, s- something along that lines. I think that, that's a good step in the, the direction. And, uh, just as far as comments going back about approvals and stuff, there have been many ordinances and, you know, laws and, and planning that have been passed that, um, under a lot of our watches. So we're not trying to go back. We're trying to accept what we know now, what we can learn, and how we can use these rules to help, uh, move our city forward. And so, uh, we all just need to look at ourselves when we talk about who was appointed at certain times or made decisions under this government. So thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor Eisner?
You know, I didn't really give it too much thought about the five years until you just made mention about that. And, uh, I know on the board of adjustments, when they get a permit, they do have a two-year deal. And I think on certain things, they, we give a three-year. Why is it a five-year?
Five years seems to be kind of a, a, I'll say an industry standard of, of development agreements. Um, I, the, the one, the one caution I would say, and, and if, if it's the consensus of this board to reduce it from five to something else, that's, you know, that's a policy decision of the board. Um, a lot of times, development agreements come with a lot of moving pieces. And you may need land use map amendments, you know, they, they will categorize a lot of things that might need to take place in the future in order to get to the point of where you're actually applying for a building permit. And so those things can take a long time. And it could be land use map amendments, it could be, so, I mean, so that's, would be my only, my only caution. I mean, development agreements are really meant to tackle complex things that are out of the ordinary. And so sometimes you just need, in order to put everything in place and then hit all those things that have to take place, can definitely take more than a year or two. So I will just kinda leave it at that. Some, and, and, you know, I think in some instances, you know, this board does a really good job. If you get a request to negotiate a development agreement that comes in and it doesn't really look like it's hitting, you know, even the initial of like, we even wanna consider this, then they get cut off. So, I mean, I, I think you've got fail safes in place to, you know, prevent some like frivolous development agreements that get all the way through a process and then sit there while they try to find a buyer. So, I mean, I think, I, I just, I, I don't know how much I would support ratcheting it back too far, you know, like three years maybe, but I, I honestly wouldn't recommend going less than that just because there's always seems to be a lot of moving pieces to a development agreement.
Could, could we also do possibly a three with a, uh, two approval, giving, you know, possibly this board or the city manager, you know, with reasons, you know, reasonable reasons. Um, because I know that we have had people on the board of adjustments. Again, I'll refer back to being, I sat on that board, um, where people came in, they gave us a whole story of why, uh, there were Brazilian peppers and there were people living there. And they gave us a whole bunch of stories. And truthfully, they just didn't have a buyer. Uh, and, or they had a architect that came in and he was an architect from a different country. I mean, I've heard almost every reason. And I just don't wanna have, um, a, a developer who's, um, has a permit and then drags their feet and drags us through, um, a long period of time. So that, that would be
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know what that bright line is. Again, it's really a policy decision of the board, you know? I don't know if it's, you know, Attorney Kardashian has any, you know, additional insight into this or not, uh, at this point. I guess I would say just think about, you know, you know, we don't have a development agreement sitting around right now, you know, that we've been waiting on. So, I mean, we don't have a lot of them.
I mean, we, it, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
The, the corner of, uh, Mears and, and US 19, that medical office building that we did. Remember that was approved and we, how much, uh, that's the
Alt 19.
The Alt 19. Did I say, Panellus Avenue and, and, uh, Mears, the corner there, the old Arfares property, the corner there?
That was actually, that, that, that whole thing was a planned development. There was a separate agreement, not a development agreement for the extension of Mears. So it was a different animal. It was not a development agreement under this process.
We were talking about that medical office, right? That, I'm not talking about where the apartments are. I'm talking about the northwest corner.
Correct.
The northwest corner, which was the, um,
That had a development agreement or a planned development?
Right. I thought it was just, it wasn't a planned development agreement. It was a development agreement with, uh, it was right next door to the Pinchapenny. The, remember we went through the site plan?
I'm not aware of a development agreement on that site.
It was with Wawa. Wawa was gonna build there, man.
And I wasn't here then.
It was after, it was after the Wawa property that the, uh, and, and right now it's just sitting there. Uh, we
That was not a development agreement.
Okay.
No, that was a regular, that was a, that was a, that was a site plan.
Well,
Yeah.
And, and I'm glad you brought that up. We don't have any sitting around right now. That would be one thing that would be interested in. How many, how many of these have, have, um, no.
Not many.
Since we were, since they were approved, how long did it take for them to get, actually get, um, their permits, uh, in place to begin construction? I, in other words, what we're saying is we're, we're gonna carry something for five or 10 years. But if most of them are coming in at less than two or three years or something, that would be something that I would like to entertain, um, and at least looking at that.
Uh, right now, I'm, I'm having a hard time from memory even coming up with an approved development agreement in the last 15 years for the city. So I, we just don't get them very often. You've had a couple of requests to negotiate development agreements that went nowhere. So
Okay.
Um, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen
Maybe, maybe we need to understand
Three or four go down in flames before they ever got anywhere. So.
Right. Maybe we need to understand a little more about what a development agreement is. I, that's fair. Uh, Commissioner Kuliannis?
I'm, I'm very comfortable with moving it from 10 to five. I, I'm not sure that I'd wanna go anything different without, um, the acquiescence of our planning department. Cause again, these, these, just as we talked about, these development agreements are unusual. So, um, you know, and you have the experience. So I, I don't know that I'd want to, uh, go to a, a shorter time than five years. Um, because there, there's also not only the procedural things that could happen, permit, uh, you know, like you were talking about with, um, with, uh, studies and such, but also there can be economic reasons, right? If somebody had neck, uh, one of these, these agreements in 2007, and then here we hit 2008 and, and we go into a deep recession, or even now, uh, you know, interest rates are much higher. So somebody may have, that could be a stumbling block as well. So they would need, you know, having that additional time, uh, can also be helpful in weathering through a bad economy. So I could see a lot of reasons why. But I, I'm, I'm comfortable with going from 10 to five. I, for sure 10's way too long, but I think five's comfortable.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Eisner?
So I agree with Commissioner Kuliannis, what he had to say, but there's always going to possibly be extenuating circumstances. And people come before a board with a, um, another application, or, um, they come with an extension. So I, I'm not saying that he's wrong in his thought, but there's ways around it that you don't have to leave it five years for everyone. That's the only difference I wanted to say.
I, I do wanna make a clarification, just so it, it says the maximum length of a development agreement is five years. That doesn't mean through the development agreement process, you don't arrive at, this particular development agreement for this particular project is only going to be three years. I don't think this is an entitlement of five years. This is a maximum of five years.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes, I, I'd be willing to entertain if staff gave their approval not to exceed three years with, uh, an extension for one additional two-year period or less.
Let, let me, before I bring this back, I'll check with all the, the other local governments and see.
You got the direction you wanted. You know where
Yes, yes.
We're, we're past the direction
Yes.
Next meeting.
Yeah, that's right. So I think everybody, uh,
I understood.
You've got three people here saying, take another look at that. Five years to a lesser amount of time. And, and, um, I think that's, you know, and then you can put your argument together on that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Um, what, city manager, of course, what I wanna do is, uh, we've got, I think, two people sitting here for that P and Z. Uh, I'd like to move that one up to where we are right now and then
That's fine.
And do the royal family. I, I don't think anyone's
I'm, I'm, I'm representing most. I know Ms. Taylor's here that
Unless there's an objection from the commission, I, we've got two people here waiting patiently for the appointment to the planning and zoning board. Um, item 17, I'd like to go ahead and address that now. Is there any objection to that?
Nope.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, so, um, Ms. Jacobs, do you wanna do this or do you want, um?
I could do it.
Go ahead.
Um, so the, the, you would actually have to, uh, do one and two. Uh, the reappointment for, um, Merrill Seaman. The reappointment for Merrell Seaman, he knows that he, it would only be for one term because that would max the 10-year allowable term. And we do have reappointments for Mike Kuskudis, Nick Zambellis, and Georgiana Franzese. They have been contacted and would like to serve again. And then the third would be either to choose number three or number four. You could either move the current alternate, Durla Gross-Early, up to that regular member position. And then appoint one of the two applicants below as an alternate. Or you could appoint one of the alternates below to fill that regular member seat and leave the alternate as stands.
Okay. And that's all spelled out in the backup as well?
That's correct.
That's right. So let me go to public comments first. Anybody here that wishes to say anything? Okay. Just for clarification, I, I know Ms. Swenson, Ms. Weaver, Ms. Rinaldi, is that you? Okay, I was wondering, I was thinking it was you. You can say something, either one of you, or you don't have to say anything. It's up to you. I, I know you've been sitting there patient.
Oh, that's okay. I watch you all the time, just in person, and not by PJ.
Lori Rinaldi Weaver, 451 East Tarpon Avenue. So I have an application in for the Planning and Zoning Board. I have reached out to several of you and had an opportunity to speak with several of you, and I appreciate your feedback. So, just a, a very quick, because it's late. I came here in 2022 from North Palm Beach. I was driving through from the north end and came upon Pinellas Avenue before the sponge docks. I saw the wooden ship that sits to the right as you come by, that's in the marina there. And I said, this is the place that I need to live. That ship spoke to me because where I came from, they would have never allowed that to sit there. And it's historic and it speaks to the nature of this town, and it, to me, is very beautiful. So I called my husband. Before I ever got to, to pass Tarpon Avenue, I was on the phone and I said, we, we need to come here. This is, this is the place for me. So that's how I found myself here. It's been said to me that experience may not be the absolute most critical thing for this Planning and Zoning Board. I respect that, but I also suggest that experience can make up for the lack of time that I've been here. I do have a lot of experience in the field, being a commercial contractor, realtor, developer. I'll tell you a very quick story. I was appointed in North Palm Beach to, as a planning commissioner. The way that I was appointed was I was coming to council meetings and I recognized a significant flaw in some direction that they were taking with regard to building a new clubhouse for our Jack Nicklaus Municipal Golf Course. It was budgeted at that time for $15 million. No one seemed to recognize that you could not build 50,000 square feet for $15 million on any planet. Not the way that they had fitted out that property. So I began to speak at those meetings and ultimately the, the plans were sent back. It was reduced by 15,000 square feet. And it still was built at an excess. And last I heard, it came in at $22 million. So had they gone forward with the 50,000 square feet, I believe they would have been in the hole for 15 million, which would have fell on the taxpayers at that time. That's the kind of experience that I think a planning commission sort of has to have a well-rounded group of people that understands how to read a blueprint, how things can affect growth and development. So we bought the Kelly House that's on East Tarpon Avenue. We didn't buy it because we needed a house. We bought it because we love the historical aspect of this town. And we wanted to bring that house back to its former glory. So I just want to, to be able to introduce myself, let you know where I stand. And if, if this isn't my day, then I hope you'll keep me in mind for the next. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm glad to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my nighttime. I wake up usually at 4 o'clock in the morning. So I, I'm not going to say much. I did reach out to some of you. I've lived in Tarpon two years.
Ms. Swenson, your name and address?
Oh, sorry. I am Susan Swenson, and I live at 327 Manity Lane, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I've lived here two years. I lived in Palm Harbor 20 years, previously Minnesota and Chicago. And, and quite honestly, like most people said, when I moved to Tarpon, I started walking around, shopping locally, met everybody at all these stores, and felt like I was at home. I didn't even know I had a void in my life, but I love it here. I know we had a discussion earlier today, and I just wish I had moved here 20, 30 years earlier. I'm currently a participant of the Tarpon Springs Citizens Academy. I actually applied to be a part of it last year, but unfortunately, due to low enrollment, it was deferred to this year. I really am appreciative and enthusiastic about learning more. I do faithfully watch all of the committees and these meetings. I feel like I know each one of you just because I see you on YouTube all the time. It's just not usually my time of the day. I did graduate as an engineer. I, I am a certified project manager. I worked for IBM over 32 years. Across the years, I did work in facilities engineering. I've worked with contractors. I know how to read blueprints. I've worked in development, performance, procurement, services. I was the quality manager for a 6,000-person facility. My strengths actually, when I was in engineering, was not sitting at a desk all day as I grew in my profession. It was more communication and leadership with the teams. It's working with the people, and I believe that's some of my strengths. My daughter and I are co-owners of a store in town. It's called Sunshine Eco Fines Resale Shop. We took our, our hobby and blossomed it into a store. I started at 407 South Pinellas, and now I'm at 409 South Pinellas. And I have visions that I really want to own that whole plaza and transform it. I don't know if that will ever happen. I'm also a property owner, a property manager. I own two hair salons. I manage 15 people there. My additional things is I have participated in my short time here doing several things. I have been in the Tarpon, Carton Tarpon Parade. I've actually, myself, driven around in the morning with hot chocolates and blankets, giving them out to the homeless. I, I, I have been in the MLK Parade. I have been on the cleanup Lime Street. I'm not going to go any further. I am a member of Downtown Tarpon Business Owners, Tarpon Springs Merchants Association, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, and I am the VP of my HOA. Just a few more things. I taught English as a second language. And I worked in the Immigration Center in Rochester, Minnesota for five years. I volunteered for Meals and Wheels, and I am a volunteer for ca- cancer patients because I am both a breast cancer and a cervical cancer survivor. I am a fighter. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other commission comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If there's anyone else that is online that would like to speak, speak, please raise your hand. And we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Commissioners, Vice Mayor Eisner, you've got your light on.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. So my question is brought to Irene. I know that some of the boards have two alternates. Why does this board not have two alternates?
That's just how the makeup of the board was.
I, I will let you know that I did review the ordinance, and it is in your ordinance. In order to add an additional alternate, you would have to amend your ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay, I want to amend the ordinance. No, I, I've watched a lot of the meetings and we've had situations where we've had two or more people missing. And, you know, I watched last night, the, I think it was last night, the historical. And there were only three members there. So I just don't understand why. I know on the Board of Adjustments, we always had two. So we have qualified people who I would like to, you know, make sure that we have enough people. You know, when I first came here, the Board of Adjustments didn't have a quorum for, I think it was, five or six months. And I tell the story where I, I was getting all of this paperwork. It was my first day. And I felt like Lucy and Ethel on the chocolate line because stuff was coming at me. And I was like, oh my God, this job is not for me. I couldn't keep up with it all, so. But I, I do think that we should have that, so I would like to see how we can move ahead with that.
Okay.
If we can't do that tonight, which I see, I know we can't. That, I would like to do that, you know, coming and making sure that all of the boards have at least two. It's, it's too important where we have people deferring, you know, projects because there's just not a full board. So, that's, that's my statement, and I don't know if anybody else wants to make a comment on that, but-
I don't know. I'm going to invite either Ms. Kardashian or City Manager. It looks like he's got that look on his face.
I just want to say, if we do this, we need to look at all the, not just piecemeal it. Let's have agenda item. The first item would be to discuss it and look at all boards and make the decision for all boards and then come back with that.
I agree.
Ms. Jacobs.
And if I could just say, that was one of the things we discussed that we would bring back now with Attorney Kardashian is some, you know, about absences. A lot of the boards don't do, I mean, first of all, we, we need volunteers, and we're not getting that pool. Number two, you know, the absences would make a difference as well, that they, that all the positions count, not just-
Sure.
You done?
Me, yes. That was-
Commissioner Kulianis.
I spoke to both of these applicants and they're both very qualified. I had the same question you did, and I asked Attorney Kardashian if we could have two alternates. And she gave me the same answer she gave you. So, yeah, I mean, I, either one of these applicants would be excellent on the Planning and Zoning. Do we have openings on any of the other boards that they have as their second and third options?
No.
We don't have any on code enforcement or historic? Do we have openings?
I'll have to go back and double check, but I know we have code enforcement. We just put a blurb out again. I, to be honest with you, I can't remember the other boards. I don't believe so. We would bring those forward. We usually try to bring more, you know, unless it's a necessity to bring in, we're not going to have a quorum. Whereas in code enforcement, we have some people that their thing is expired, but we don't have a quorum. So until we get those applicants, we can't fill those positions.
Okay. Well, either, either of these applicants would be, would be fine for that board, so.
Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything?
I think both applicants are, are great candidates. I would, I would prefer to select Ms. Weaver for this board. And that's just for now. See if any other suggestions from this- No, just discussion.
Well.
All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor Eisner.
So here's the way I, I view it. You have, and this, this would be even a motion for me. Wait a second. I want to think this through. Let me have it as a discussion, not as a motion. So should I make the motion first and then make it a discussion?
That would probably be the appropriate way to do it. You still have to have a second on your motion.
Because we're sitting here discussing this.
I mean, you could discuss it. You don't have to make a, the, the motion's up to you.
Okay. So what I, I like to do is, and I think this is following protocol, we've always moved alternates up. It's a rarity to not move an alternate up because they're the person that's more experienced. They've been sitting here. They're not knitting. They're actually listening to cases. They get a good feel of what's going on. Okay. Then the next thing, when you have two candidates like this who are neck and neck, how do you make a decision? So my decision, and yes, I've spoken to both candidates here. You, you have to look at who's applied, at least is the way I'm going to look at it. Who's applied first and also who's attending a, a Citizens Academy. That's the only, you know, thing that I, I, and, and that doesn't, I hope you understand that doesn't take away from anyone else. As far as also looking into the future, Mr. Seaman is going to term out in October. And hopefully whoever we don't select stays on. Or we could change it to have, which I really love to do, have two alternates. But, you know, within a short period of time, we're going to have somebody being on the, on meeting for the Planning and Zoning Board anyway. So that's the way I would like to place my motion. If you want me to repeat it, I can.
Say it a little shorter way.
I am a little short.
Say your motion in a little shorter way.
Okay. I motioned to reappoint Merrell Seaman. I motioned to reappoint Mike Kuskudis, Nick Zambellis, and Georgiana Franzese. I motioned to move Durla from alternate to take Commissioner Kulianis's position. I motioned to move Susan Swenson to the alternate. And I can't, I, I can't motion the next, but I would just hope to then eventually move the next person either into another alternate position or to have her be there coming for when Merrell Seaman retires. That's my comment.
We've never, we've, no, I understand, except for the very last part. We've never had a situation where let me, let me, because I know Commissioner Kulianis wants to say something. We've never had a situation where you, you have somebody that wants to go ahead and move them into the alternate that's the vacancy. But then almost guarantee the person that is also applying that they would have the next vacancy.
Right. So technically, you can't do that because you don't know what the board is going to look like when that, when that seat becomes available. Yeah, the rest of it should be fine. It, it's just you can't pre-appoint somebody because when that seat does become vacant, there could be different faces up here. So you can't bind that other board and keep them from making that position.
Just, I'll retract the last comment.
Okay.
Okay, so let, let me go to Commissioner Kulianis.
We did have a situation with the Planning and Zoning Board in which we made an appointment. It was Mr. Rockline. Mr. Rockline hadn't been around not too long, had a lot of experience when it came to planning and contracting. Wasn't part of any Citizens Academy, currently is in the Citizens Academy. And so we ended up appointing him. I think we have a good opportunity between, excuse me, one, both of these candidates. I veer more towards Ms. Weaver as I think Ms. Swenson has an ability to possibly contribute some, to some other boards with, with her overall experience as well. So that's, that's my thought process. I see Ms., I know we have that person who's been sitting as an alternate, and I appreciate their work. And I wouldn't mind moving them up, but I wouldn't mind keeping them as an alternate either. And so I would prefer Ms. Weaver at this current time for this position.
Let, let me go back to some old business on here for a second. Commissioner Eisner, was yours, you, you would like to make a motion, or did you, did you make a motion?
I did make a motion.
You did.
But we did not have a second to that motion, or did we?
We did not.
I didn't ask for a second yet. So I'm asking, after that little interlude between, I mean, with myself and Mr.
I didn't ask for a second yet. So I'm asking after that little interlude between, I mean, with myself and Mr. Kulianis, excuse me, Commissioner Kulianis, is there a second to Vice Mayor Eisner's motion?
Can I make a comment before?
Of course.
No.
No, no, go ahead. I, I let Commissioner Kulianis say.
Well, we're kinda free flowing anyways here, so. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Kulianis. I, I think that at, at resume, resume to resume, I would think that Ms. Weaver would have a little more of an advantage on her resume as a stronger planning and zoning member. I do agree with the Vice Mayor that citizens academy attendance should matter. We are trying to encourage people to go that route. So. But let me just, Merle Seaman, he, he would, he, he goes out October 1st, 2024?
Yes, yeah.
That's, he's, it's not, it's not one year after that. It's up to October 1st.
His 10-year anniversary is October.
So I would be, I know we can't make that motion now. Like you say, we can't make the motion to pick somebody when Merle leaves.
Right.
But given the two candidates, I would be fine with either one of them. And I would have in the back of my mind the other person when that job comes, spot comes open.
But I still need a second.
But you, you have to change your motion because you put that at the end of your motion.
No, no, I, I pulled that back. I did change it.
Well, let me, hold on. You said what you said to say, right? Are you done?
I said what I said.
Okay. Is there a second to Commissioner Eisner, Vice Mayor Eisner's motion?
But the last part of his motion isn't.
He did, he did retract that.
You rescinded that part?
Yes.
The mayor, he, he, he doesn't, he didn't realize I pulled back the se-
Oh, you did? You rescinded it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we've got a new, an opportunity for a new motion.
Which is what?
So.
I could repeat myself.
Wait a minute.
Yes, can we, let's just go ahead and restate the motion. Can you, Vice Mayor, please?
Yeah, cause I'm confused.
Okay. So, so reappoint Merle Seaman. Reappoint Mike Kuskudis, Nick Zambellis, Georgiana Franzese. Move the alternate Durla up to your old position. And put Susan Svensson in as the alternate.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are we clear on that? Commissioner Kulianis, did you have anything else?
I would have preferred to see Ms. Gross Early stay as the alternate and bump Ms. Weaver up to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Kulianis, but.
So can I say something here? Okay.
Well, we, we have a motion and a second. So commission discussion. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Eisner.
Yes. So I, I know Commissioner Kulianis said the comment regarding moving people up, we have done that. It's a rarity. But we, we do that when somebody comes in with an extraordinary amount of knowledge or information that supersedes that person that's been sitting on the alternate. And also those decisions sometimes get made when the alternate doesn't attend. So we have also taken up a new policy which our clerk would tell you that we're keeping tabs now on attendance as well. So there's a lot of different reasons why you can move somebody up, but, you know, what can I tell you? It is what it is.
Kinda smiling because Commissioner Kulianis just turned his light on, so. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Eisner, you, did you have anything else?
Well, I, I just wanted to clarify it's, when, when you have people that are neck and neck, it's so hard to choose other than how soon they, they put in their request and what, whether they're doing the citizens academy or not. I mean, this was my conversation that, that I had with Ms. Weaver. And we had a great conversation. I had the same conversation with Ms. Svensson. They're, they're both great candidates. And, you know, so for me, the only thing I could do, at least I try to use common sense and one applied in December, one applied in January, one, you know, is, is in the citizens academy and I hope Ms. Weaver joins the citizens academy and gets involved with all these other things. But it's not like it's the end of the world. Within a short period of time, we're gonna need another person. And I don't disagree with what Commissioner Kulianis said about her knowledge of all of this stuff. You know, I, I agree. But I just wanna try to be as fair as possible. It's not be, it's not easy to be up here and playing King Solomon, but, you know, you gotta use some sort of discretion and that's my discretion. And she's a fellow member from New York. So I mean, I, I, I do lean that way, but you know what? All right. Commissioner Kulianis.
Yeah, I go back to your, your famous saying. What is it? Bakers, candlestick makers and.
Say it again.
What is your saying? Candlestick makers, bakers and.
Oh, bakers, butchers and candlestick makers.
Yeah, that's who we all are anyways. So I'm fine with, with.
Now, since I've forgotten what the motion is.
Yeah, his motion.
Do you want me to repeat it for the first?
Let me just say, if I understand, we're, we're putting Ms. Weaver, recommending Ms. Weaver for the for the alternate seat, right?
No, that was not the motion.
What it, well, that's the point. What is the motion?
Motion is that you reappoint Mr. Seaman. You also reappoint Mr. Kuskudis, Mr. Zambellis, and Mrs. Franzese. And that you move the alternate member Durla Gross Early to fill the regular position. And that you appoint Mrs. Svensson as the alternate member.
So we've gone back and forth between Ms. Svensson, Ms. Weaver, and now Ms. Svensson.
No, no, we have not.
If I could just add, you do keep the file, the applications on file for here.
I hope if, as a minimum, you, you understand that you're both well, extremely appreciated. And I, just so you'll know, I did exchange emails with Ms. Weaver and I did tell her these things are usually non-competitive. And the first person that's nominated usually gets the nom, the, the appointment. So, you know, and, and there is some prerogative or some value of being mayor up here. I can just sit here and listen to these guys and, and I don't have to worry about Pat making a nomination or making a motion unless I pass the gavel. So I very, I, I wanna thank both of you for volunteering. And, and I, I do know that is, is I, we have more openings than we do have volunteers. Let me just leave it at that. So there's, there's plenty of opportunities to serve the city of Torp and Springs. If, if there's no further comments from the commission, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus.
Yes. Thank you both. Yeah, I'm sorry it took so long to get to this point. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kardashian. Let's go back to item 15, approved proclamation plaque and event honoring Calvin Rudy Royal at Dorset Park. City Mantra Chorus.
Yes, I've been working with the family, with the Dorset Park Committee, Ms. Taylor, thanks for hanging on even through that item that jumped us. We've been working together since last year of how to honor a gentleman by the name of Calvin Rudy Royal. Those of us who've been around a long time like me and the mayor know of the, of the Royal family. I had the pleasure of Nancy Royal. We were classmates in this building and classmates at Torp and High. Mr. Royal, I used to see him when I was on patrol, my early patrol days of the seventies and eighties. Especially Sundays when he was in his buccaneer gear. And the family's come to us because he's made a great contribution in the Union Academy neighborhood. As you know, in 2024, we talked about the beginning of some great things going on based on this commission's input from the last year. We had a great Arbor Day event. We had a great MLK event. We've got a dead, well, our first historic designation. Hopefully the end of February, March for Ed Dorset and the historical plaque for the park that we were at. And this is something to honor somebody who is very involved with the youth of the community. He would coach teams in baseball when there was just an empty field to coach them in. Very involved in the community. He was one of the ones, again, as in my early patrol days and stuff, he was an inspiration for me to carry on his work and start a program called Cops and Kids 10 years later in the eighties and beginning of nineties and go on where Cops and Kids and the youth center is gone. So he's a very important and working with the Dorset Park Committee, the absolute appropriate place for a plaque honoring this is at Dorset Park and it would be on the concession stand. They've already got something going on with the public art committee for a mural to honor him. So this plaque that, that you would approve tonight would kinda complement the mural that is going on, the concession stand that the public art will be bringing you later. So in talking with them and getting how we could honor the city, there's, there's three things we've listed. A proclamation to honor Mr. Royal, Mr. Royal designated April 27th as Rudy Day. It would be a proclamation that would be read at, at number three, which is a Rudy Day event at Dorset Park on that day, sponsored by the city and him. There was gonna be an event that we were gonna do in the Dorset Park in the March, April time period. This is perfect to coincide with the family and the honor of him and to combine the city event that was gonna happen with this event. And of course, what I talked about placing a wall plaque on the building that would honor him and his efforts. We worked with the family. You see some bio information that we would put into a plaque that is in your backup. You see what he did coaching girls softball, even to a national championship in the seventies, I believe. So he's very deserving. He's one of those quiet people that, that worked hard and was a role model. Real quiet, didn't ask for acknowledgements, didn't ask for things, just a quiet person who spent a lot of years. And historically is important for what he did in mentoring the youth of the Union Academy neighborhood. So, so knowing him, knowing the family, knowing what he did, those three things from the family is what we came up to propose for the Board of Commissioners. Again, I wanna thank Ms. Taylor and the Dorset Park Committee for, for working with us and the family, putting this together. Again, Ms. Nancy Royal, who was, was my classmate and stuff, she's in Georgia and I told her I'd carry this for tonight for her. She'd have to come down from Georgia for this, but I'd carry it. So meeting with the community, the family, this is what we recommend for, for the commission to approve tonight and we'll begin the process to do those, those three things. To honor him and have a permanent honoring of him and what he did for that community.
Thank you. Public comments. Were there any public comments?
Your legs fell asleep. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Katie Taylor, 1991 Douglas Lane, Torp and Springs. Thank you, well, Mr. Lacouris Mark. Thank you for, for supporting this for the Dorset Park Revitalization Committee. Because as he said, the Dorset Park Revitalization Committee is trying to do a lot of things right now to unify our community as well as revitalize Dorset Park. And my, I too am taking the citizens academy class because I wanna make things better in my, my community. I've also established another committee, the Hurricane Prepare, Community Hurricane Preparedness Committee with the emergency management. That consists of churches and about 10 people as well as ministers in our community. So I'm trying to be as involved as I can with my community and, and I'm planning on attending these meetings because I'm dedicated to trying to help our community as well as Torp and Springs. All of us coming together and make things better. Vice Mayor Lunt, not Lunt, Eisner, I'm sorry.
I could be Lunt, that's okay.
Vice Mayor Eisner, you mentioned something about on the court enforcement back on number 13. Your comment almost made me wanna go and get on the court enforcement board because of something you, you mentioned about a home on, on Martin Luther King being in the historical district. That it doesn't pass the sniff test if you go in the community. So we, we won't go there. I'll just stick with, with the Rudy project for now. But comments like that, when you're using code, using code enforcement to rehab a, a home that has no historical value, please do your homework before you start looking into stuff like that in that community because there are homes in that community that does have support, should have support. They're not getting it. So because their name's not brought up, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be recognized. But as far as the Dorset Park Committee, yeah, Rudy Project is one thing that we're doing. We work with Arbor, Arbor Day. We're also looking forward to doing another, a project with the Garden Club. And we're working on Juneteenth. So thank y'all for supporting the Juneteenth. That's a big thing in our community. So we really appreciate the city approving us to have a June, a Juneteenth event. And that proclamation that y'all gave tonight for the Black History, preferably our community can come together. Because that's the first I heard that proclamation was gonna even happen. And if that's the case, how can we work together if we separate it? So the Dorset Park Revitalization Committee is just not for the eight to 10 people that we have on it. It's for the community. If y'all know anybody that wanna join that, please have them call me because it's open. We need to unify. So that's what we're working on to try to get Rudy, the Rudy Project approved. Because yeah, I was one of those people that was on that softball team with Calvin and it kept me out of trouble when it got me out the house. So Calvin needed to be recognized. He was a good guy. He did a lot for the youth in our community. And he had a lot of sports activities up in the park. One, I know we couldn't get the field named after him because of, you know, legal stuff. But maybe one day we can have something that honor his name besides just his name on the side of a building. It would be nice to have something to honor Rudy. So like a recreation center, like the, the, when the school was here last week, you know, I had the proclamation for the high school. And the students was even saying, we need a, we need a, we need a recreation complex, compound, whatever the coach was talking about. But things like that. So I look forward to, to trying to pull our community together and let the city have a, a better light shine in our community because I think y'all doing a good job. And y'all trying to make things better. So I support you out there. So just know that, that I do support this, the diocese. So thank y'all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there any other public comments from any attendees? Mr. Chump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do have a raised hand. I'll let that person at it this time. Please unmute and you can give your name and your address, please.
Juliana Day, 413 East Oakwood Street here in Torp and Springs. I do appreciate the commit, commission and the citizens of Torp and Springs for recognizing the Dorset Park Committee and also in recognizing everything that's going on in the city. We're building this city to make it more greater than it is. And I just wanna thank you all. And you will be hearing from me later.
Thank you. Mr. Chump, is there anyone else?
And there are no other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Oh, is that Mike? Raise his, yeah, hey, Mike. All right. Okay. So commission comments, anything? Vice Mayor Eisner.
I can't really speak about this because I don't know the gentleman that's involved in this, but from what I've heard and what I can read and what I've listened to, I think it would be an honor to do these types of things. So I, I have no issues with this whatsoever. I would be there for, you know, for all of these things. I did also, if it's okay, I would like to answer Katie Taylor's, you know, comment. I just wanted you to know that at the MLK parade a number of years ago, I drove Annie Dabs in, in the MLK parade. It happened to just show up on my Facebook page that is a thing that just, it just showed up. So I remember when we were driving, she pointed out that house to me and that's why I use that as a reference to this ruling. she pointed out that house to me and that's why I use that as a reference to this ruling. I agree with you. I do not know the homes and I'm happy to always find out which homes they are, but it's, it's not my place to decide which homes should get it. Um, I just was using that as an example because that's what was in my head. So I didn't want you to think for any reason that I was trying to slight anyone or put anybody. I just knew about that one. So that was my reasoning for using that, um, example. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kulianis.
Yes, uh, this is just a, a great way to move forward and recognize, uh, individuals who have made a big impact in, in the community. For people like yourself, Ms. Taylor, who have grown up here and, uh, we, we can never do enough of that. We should always be trying to promote individuals in town who have made a big impact and, uh, always try, especially the, the Union Academy Neighborhood and, uh, I appreciate you, Ms. Taylor, and those out there, uh, knowing that this diocese board, uh, is always looking out for the Union Academy Neighborhood and everyone in it. So, um, this is a big step in the right direction and, uh, even I being here my whole life, I didn't know Mr. Calvin Rudy Royal or really heard of him until recently. So this is a, a great thing for the community and, uh, to have individuals be able to see his plaque, read about him and understand that there are some great people in town who helped shape up a lot of people's lives here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything?
No, can I make a motion?
Before you do, uh, I asked, um, City Manager Lacouris to say a couple more in terms of the dates and everything for the public to understand.
Yes, the date, which would be in the proclamation, which will be presented, the event will be Saturday, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-four. That date, we worked on with the family and the family from out of town and stuff could be there. Um,
That would be at Dorset Park.
So it'd be at Dorset Park. Probably we're talking about ten AM or something to start and we'd have an agenda set and, uh, at the beginning is where the mayor would read the proclamation. We'd all be there tonight. And then a lot of it's going to be different things with youth activities since that's what he was. Uh, I know they're going to organ, the, the committee is going to help us. Dorset Park Committee and family is going to help us organize the activities out there. We'll have some food. So, so again, we're planning some type of event in March, April. So this is the perfect segue to combine our city event at Dorset Park with this historic honor in the youth. And, uh, so hopefully everybody, Patricia will have it on your calendar tomorrow because you, if you approve it tonight, it'll be on your calendar tomorrow. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kulianis, go ahead with the motion.
Okay, I make, I make a motion. We approve the proclamation, plaque and event honoring Calvin Rudy Royal at Dorset Park.
Second. Any other comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner? Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes. Um, okay, the, the last item is the discussion and direction on Sister Cities trip to Greece. So let me say something about this and, and we'll get from there. Um, we had the annual meeting of the Sister Cities not too long ago, uh, and it just so happened that it was either that early morning or the day before, we finally got acknowledgement from the mayor of Egina that he would, he, he confirmed that he would like to, uh, sister with Tarpon Springs. And this was something that was done, I think, when I first became a commissioner, it came to, um, Mayor Alhousis at the time and for a variety of things, primarily COVID, it kind of, uh, put things on hold. And the, the second part of that was this communication between the two countries and, and, and just trying to exchange information. And then Mr. Lucas Tsokos, who's the, uh, council general for, um, the consulate there in Tampa, um, actually brokered the, the communication. So we finally got a hard date of, um, May seventeenth for signing the Sister City with Egina. And that coincides with the day that the, uh, St. Petersburg College class, uh, that will be touring Greece will be in Egina at the same time. That was kind of a planned thing. So, um, I, I, I'm trying to get a sense for, um, who of you, obviously I have to be there, but who of you would like to go on this trip or would plan to go on this trip? I know that some of you typically go to someplace else later in the summer. So, um, Vice Mayor Eisner, I know you just went to Australia. How about you, Commissioner Kulianis? You're going to Germany, right? When are you going to Germany?
I'm going to Germany in September. I'm at, the reason I was looking on my phone, I was just looking at my schedule. Um, when, when in May is this taking place?
May seventeenth is the day and then-
How long are you staying? How long are you staying there?
Um, well, it, that's the point. Um, the class is getting there earlier. We just changed the schedule to accommodate staying later. So that's actually quite open right now. I was planning on going to Egina and then also to Hidra, which is another sister city. So one either before the other, it doesn't matter as long as we're in Eg, in Egina on May seventeenth.
So what days were you going to be there? What days will you be in Greece?
Who?
What days will you be in Greece?
Um, we, we were thinking, Dolly was, obviously is going to go. And, um, I think that something a few days, um, before Egina and then we were talking about maybe ten days or so. But now that the city manager put forward to changing the dates, it may even be a little longer than that, maybe two weeks. I don't know. It would be probably a minimum of ten days.
But you don't have to stay that long, like?
No, no.
I could come and stay six days.
Yes, of course.
Well, let me talk to the wife.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just trying to put that out right now.
I think she would love a trip.
Well, we've got a little time. It's May. So, um, I just want to put that out and at least I've got one nibble right now, which would be you besides me and, and that would be good and, and-
Are you looking for representation?
In the sense of representing the city?
Yes.
The answer is yes, but it's an awful lot to ask, um, to go in, and it's, and we're going to try and get Egina to come back here, uh, before the first of the year to do the, the other, the half, the other half of the signing here. Uh, but, um, when, uh,
And the only consideration is, the only consideration is, um, possibly the ability to have three people here. If something happened in an emergency meeting, I don't know what we would do if we only had two commissioners left and something came up. I, I don't, I don't know if we can, the attorney and I would have to work on that if more than, if more than two goes and we wouldn't have three people to call a meeting.
So you, you actually are required to hold your meetings in your jurisdiction. You're not allowed, there's, there's only one jurisdiction that I know of that has permission from the state legislature to hold their meetings outside of their-
They don't have a place.
Yeah, yeah, um, outside of their jurisdiction. So, um, if you had three people gone, you could not conduct business. That would be certain.
And we moved the, we moved the regular meeting to, boy, that. The problem is if an emergency came up and I needed to call, call a meeting, we would be prohibited. I'd almost, I guess they'd leave me to make the decision.
Yeah, probably. It would probably-
We'd have to do something to-
I mean, honestly, that helps a little bit. I mean, I, I, I don't want to abandon the, you know, our responsibility of, of having less than three people here. So, um, unless you want to, I mean, I'd be, I'd be happy with all of us to go, but I don't know that that's going to be, um, it'd leave the city without any governance.
Yeah, I, I have no intention.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'd be happy to stay, Vice Mayor Eisner, if you want to. But Dolly would kill me when I get home. So I, I, I think, why don't we just think about it right now? I know Commissioner Kulianis, I'd like to have at least one other commissioner with me, um, at that, um, at that, uh, time. And the other thing too, Commissioner Kulianis, you, you might want to think about, uh, that there will be in Kalimos as well, the, um, the, the, um, the SPC class and, and, and we, of course, there's a former mayor there that's now the vice mayor there too, that would probably roll the red carpet out, uh, for you. So, um, why don't we just leave it at that right now? And, and then also, um, we, we probably need to discuss a little bit about any, uh, subsidizing of expenditures to go over, um, overseas.
Oh, you didn't say anything about that.
Talk about that with the city manager. Yeah, talk about that with the city manager and, and I'll talk to him too as well. Is, is that it then? Is there anybody else? Commissioner?
I can't see myself having a-
No, I understand. I, yeah, you got, uh, there's, it's an awful lot to ask. So is there any, can we leave it at that?
Yes, and then discuss it individually with me and we can-
All right.
Find points.
So that, that ends the, um, agenda? It's ten forty-six. Let me go to board and staff comments. Um, Chief Young?
No comments, sir.
Um, Ms. Kardashian?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, um, City Manager Lacouris?
No comments.
No comments.
Jacobs?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Kulianis, do you have anything?
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes, I do have some comments. So first, I did ask the city manager to look into, because some of the rules and regulations for Airbnb's changed as of February first. So I wanted him to, uh, and, and, you know, find out how it affects our grandfather and claws and all of the other things. Cause I know that's a, a really super contentious type item here in Tarpon Springs. So that was one thing. Um, number two, I don't know how much of this I can speak about. I don't want to speak about too much, but I did send out pictures, um, to the city manager. I know he forwarded it to everybody regarding what the flooding situation on Seabreeze. Um, honestly, my pictures did not a hundred percent foretell what was there. It was many hours after the, uh, rain and every single person's driveway was flooded, uh, with, it looked like an indoor, outdoor pool. And truthfully, where the pump station was, I rode through six inches of water. So, and that was all sitting there. So, um, I did bring it to their attention. Um, I don't know what's going to be with it. It just, it can't stay the way it is. The first part of the, um, putback of Seabreeze is fine. There's no water in any of the driveways. Um, there, everything is fine. It's that from the pump station all the way to, um, the entrance of Seabreeze, every driveway was flooded. So there was like a, a belly in front of everyone's driveway. So everybody would have to drive through. And this was, it was a heavy rain. I'm not going to say no, but it should dissipate to the grass, not to where it can, you know, uh, where it just piles up in front of people's driveways. I have gotten a number of complaints about it. That's why I drove down that block. Um, that's why I took the pictures. What we do, what Bob and the city manager does with this down the road, you know, whatever. But, um, so that, that's that part. Um, and I encourage if we do get a heavy rain, take a ride down that block shortly after, within an hour or two hours. See for yourself. This way you have an idea what's going on. Um, the twentieth at that meeting, I would love to see that we move this meeting because I have a seven AM flight to Texas, um, to see my little granddaughter. So I, um, you know, I know I'd have to be up at four thirty or five in the morning. So I, I don't, I know we have a heavy meeting because we got to make a decision on a commission, um, uh, candidate and-
Can we start it earlier?
I, if we could, I'd love that, you know, I'm not-
Or ask for it to be, uh, lighter than normal.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I, I just know there's a, a lot of stuff that we get. Um, so if it's, you know, I don't want to do the Great Escape. I don't want to be comatose, you know. That's it. And I just want to thank everybody, you know, even though everybody left. Hi Debbie, I know you're still here. Um, but I, I do want to thank everybody because I, I really think, um, this board's doing a great job. You know, we have our differences of opinions, but, um, I think everybody has their, um, the, the town at their, at the heart. And I, I love working with the people here. And, you know, we have some really good candidates, uh, you know, that, that have stepped forward. I was unsure whether we'd even have one, you know? So it was nice that we have five, you know? So that's pretty much it. And I did watch the Heritage Board last night. Again, I thank Ms. Kardashian. You did a great job as always. So, and, and today too. So I, I'm going to kill you with compliments. Not shy.
Okay, Commissioner Kulianis?
Next Saturday, the seventeenth, I think it's the seventeenth, is, um, a five K run at Howard Park. You can walk it. You can bring your bicycle. It's for the band. The high school band is doing a fundraiser. Um, so anybody that's interested in participating, I think it's like thirty dollars to, to participate. Um, I'd be good with starting the meeting at six. At least get a head, a half hour head start on it. Um, and yes, we did have a picture of John Kennedy in our house. So.
If, if the board wishes, um, I can look at, first of all, I can try to, try to make sure it's a shorter agenda. If for some reason I can't because there's items that have to be, if you give me discretion by probably enough time to advertise, um, then I'd send something out about, if you give me the permission to change it, if it looks like it's going to be long, I'll try to shorten it. Just depending on what items have to be on it. But if you give me authority to call and give at least a week's notice to the public, if I, it looks like it's going to be that, then I'll send all of you and make sure there's no objections to move it to like six o'clock or something. But let me gauge the agenda and see if we can do it agenda wise. And again, a lot of it that night, we were thinking of keeping it a little light anyway because we knew about your decision with the, with the other commissioner might take longer. So it may work out itself because we knew the timeframe on that, uh, you know, could be extended. So.
Do you need authority for anything?
It's just authority to look at it. If it's necessary because of the agenda to send to you and advertise a change of the meeting to six.
Change the meeting.
To six. If, 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 if the agenda can't be shortened.
You, is there no, is, is there objection to, uh, uh, city manager taking that run? Do you want a motion?
I just was wondering if the meeting time is set in your resolution. Because it would have to be changed in the resolution is the problem. Seven thirty's the, the time for the public hearings. But what you could do is notice the six o'clock as a special meeting, as like an earlier special meeting, half an hour beforehand and have certain items for six o'clock rather than moving the whole meeting time that way. Because otherwise, otherwise, because if, if my memory serves me correctly, I think your meeting time is set in your resolution. So when you change that, you have to change it via resolution.
Well, depending on the board, that special, special meeting to start out could be your, your selections of the fourth, of the fifth member.
I, I wouldn't mind starting the meeting.
Why don't you just, you, you've got some, I mean, I think unless a commissioner's got an objection, I, I, I'd like to give you some flexibility to go ahead and work with Ms. Kardashian and Ms. Jacobs that whatever you need.
So if we need to, what we probably do is, is notify you to give a week's notice that there'd be a special meeting to start with. It would be on your selection of the fifth member and then the commission meeting to follow, to follow. But hopefully I'll be able to get that agenda set. So, so, uh,
All right. Commissioner Kulianis, you put your line.
Yeah, I would just prefer that we, you know, if we could start it even between five or six o'clock, but if it's in resolution form and, and we can't, that's, that's fine. But I'd like to get as much agenda items as possible, even move it up an hour or so earlier. That way we can have a productive meeting and get out sometime earlier in the night.
I'm good with that.
Mayor, it says, "Meetings shall begin promptly at six thirty PM unless otherwise noticed."
Okay.
So there's flexibility there.
Okay, so that, yeah, that'll, that gives you the flexibility then, if, if you're going to notice it then at six.
Yep.
And then we can change the, um, ordinances or resolution start time as well. Or is that, that's done by resolution?
Uh, let me look at that first. I'll look at that with the city manager to see if we can change that.
But in any case, we can fill in the, the longer time between six thirty and seven thirty.
I'm sorry, it's just, it's her number two birthday, you know?
No, that's okay.
Just remember something- Just remember something, the problem is starting early. If we end, you know, we did that one time, started a meeting early and then we had a forty five minute gap.
That's right. I remember that, yep.
Mayor, is thirty minutes enough? Do you think thirty minutes is enough time?
Thirty minutes?
Yeah, thirty.
You mean from six to six thirty?
Yeah.
So you're talking about five thirty instead of six?
Play it safe. If we have a lot of agenda items.
You got to play it by, see you.
Five thirty or six, depending on the agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Um. The only thing I I had was um, I just wanted to mention at the beginning of the meeting, we had um one of the speakers with the signs. And I appreciate Ms. Kardashian. I didn't realize what was going on at the time. Ms. Kardashian, you know, gave me enough of a cue to try and figure out what it was. And and so and then she jumped right in and asked for a motion to um to to have him remove the signs. Which I think honestly is probably the best approach. And um I know I'm supposed to, uh do we have a, do we have, did we change the rules yet for placards and signs or?
You don't currently have anything in your, in your resolution or rules decorum that addresses that. Um, certainly uh the the hate speech you do. Um, so on on that ground, certainly, you know, you're fine with that. Um, but I do think if he's going to continue or anybody else for that matter. Um, this isn't really the type of venue where you could have a lot of people in here with signs.
Okay, uh the what I wanted to mention was that I I know in the past, the mayor has taken it upon himself. And it's gotten into some pretty heated one-on-one sort of discussions. And I appreciated the commission weighing in on it with a motion. And I think that was, in my opinion, that was a appropriate way and probably sent a stronger signal to who's ever doing it. Rather than just one individual saying, you know, take the signs down and then asking Chief Young to, if he doesn't escort him out of the lobby. So I I I just wanted to say I appreciate that and and.
I was going to tell you, he does the same thing at Ford Pinellas and they have issues there as well.
I I I've seen that and 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 I I just, I I'm a little bit of a more patient individual. I I know, you know, maybe, maybe he wasn't, I don't know, he, but he did take the signs down and I appreciated that. So um in the future, um if that happens, I don't have a problem with doing the exact same thing, so, okay? All right, uh that's all I have. Meeting adjourned at uh ten fifty eight.